Welcome and good evening to the Lewiston City Council Regular Meeting for Monday, July 22, 2013. I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. First item of business is a pledge of allegiance. Please stand and join us will be led in the pledge by Pro-Tam Brad Cannon.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item of business is citizens' comments. We've got a number of people here, so for clarification, if you're here for one of the public hearings, you'll have an opportunity to speak specifically to those when we open the public hearings. And so, at this time, we'll take citizens' comments. If some of you are here, I think we've got a few gentlemen in the audience that wants to speak to ordinance 4596 regarding the public skate park. This would be the appropriate time in the meeting to address the council with any of your concerns or comments. Just may come up here and just, for the record, state your name and address, please.
Riley Hughes. Riley Hughes, 1924 Burl Avenue. Okay. Like I said, my name's Riley Hughes and I'm 18 years old. I've been riding scooters for coming up on, I think, five years. And I just have some concerns about the ordinance 4596. I've read the ordinance and items, under the prohibited items, letters B through J are good and I have no objections. In fact, I support those items. But item A is what I have an issue with. And essentially, that would create penalties to ban the use of freestyle scooters at the Mountain Dew Skate Park. This park is an asset to the community and it was built for the community. It was built for use by all ages and all people. And there's a really big portion of people who ride these freestyle scooters. And this park has grown this sport in our town and I've been, you know, riding scooters since long before this park was built and I've seen the number of scooter riders go from three to 10 to 50. And this has led, I think, four shops, four skateboard or bicycle shops in the valley to stock freestyle scooter parts. I started a manufacturing business, manufacturing freestyle scooter parts, and it was partially supported by the scooter-riding scene here in the town. And the skate park was a big part of that. And I manufactured locally here in the valley in machine shops and wholesale to people all over the country. And it keeps people, keeps the riders of these scooters off of the streets. It gives them a place to ride and perfect their skills. And it says in the ordinance that safety is the number-one objective, and I agree wholeheartedly with that. And there are a lot of scooter riders who are very young. There, I think that's one of the issues that has been brought to the council is that there are a lot of really young scooter riders. So I think about half of the kids who are really young are on scooters because, for one, it's safer. There's not a big learning curve, you know, as a, like a skateboard would have. You know, it takes a lot more practice to be able to ride a skateboard down a ramp than it does to ride a scooter down the ramp. And so it's safer for these kids to ride those. But these kids don't know the etiquette or how to take their turns and let other people have a turn and everything. They don't know this unwritten rules of the skate park etiquette. And I think that's the core of the problem here is the, is that, well, yeah, just the age of these people is what's, the age of these kids is what's the problem. And it's an inconvenience to the older people, the older skateboarders, bikers, or scooter riders, to have all these little kids filling the skate park and doing all these things. And I think that's what this ordinance is about, is to try to lessen that inconvenience. But, and so I get it. I'm almost 19 years old and I know how the skate park works. I've been going since the opening day. And it's definitely a problem with these kids. But I think that the way we do it is what I try to do, and that is to help these kids learn how to take turns and where to stand when they're not riding and how to act at a skate park. We just need to be mentors and examples to these kids and maybe even require parental supervision for children under a certain age. I don't know what the exact solution, the perfect solution is, but I do know that banning the use of, banning the vehicle that they ride is not going to curb the problem of little kids because the other half of the little kids who aren't riding scooters are on little bikes, riding in circles or riding their skateboards around, like, or sliding down the ramps like a slide or whatever, what have you. This park just means so much to me and I've been there since the initial planning stages when the contractors came to our town to see what we wanted. I've been to all those meetings. I've been there every step of the way, helped fundraise for this park. I've helped, and I've helped organize competitions and events at the skate park. And it's been a really big part of my life these last couple of years. And I would hate to, I would hate to not be able to do what I love anymore. Thank you.
Mr. Riley. Hughes, Mr. Hughes. Would you, I know that in the discussions with Mr. Dan Prozel, he said that one of the concerns they had was the damage that the scooters were causing because some of them had a wider frame. Would you agree with that statement or?
Well, I think one of my friends was gonna touch on that.
Was he?
But I will, but yeah, I think that anything that you ride there is gonna cause some damage. There are parts of the skate park that scooters have damaged and I've taken pictures of all of them if you care to see. But I've also taken pictures of all the places that bikes have damaged with their, with, you know, 25-pound bikes with steel pegs hanging out the sides are gonna do some damage. And also skateboards that have steel axles sticking out of all the wheels, which if the skateboard lands on the ground sideways, both axles have impact on the ground. And there's a certain place where a lot of skateboarders ride that the ground is just chipped and rough because it's entirely chipped up from these axles of the skateboards. And so I would agree that there is some damage done by scooters, but I would definitely say that it's, I would even say that it's not as much as bikes or skateboards do. And yeah, anyway, yeah.
All righty. Thank you, Mr. Hughes.
Do you have any other questions about just scooters in general or anything about it?
I just try to stay off of them. I know my limits. But I know who to contact now if I have them or if I have some. Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Is there any other citizens' comments this evening?
Hello, my name is Michael Monroe and I live at 428 Warner Avenue, Lewiston. I started riding scooters about a year and a half, two years ago, and it's been a huge part of my life ever since then. All last summer and most of this summer, I've been on my scooter and without the skate park, I honestly wouldn't know what to do. And then if scooters were banned from the skate park, there'd be a bunch of kids on the streets, like, riding on the streets. And at the college, there's a big problem with that and stuff. There's just so many kids that ride and would be really disappointed if the skate park would ban scooters and stuff. And I know my friends would. So that's really all I have to say.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Monroe.
My name is Robert Cook and I live at 3129 and 1/2, 8th Street, C, Unit A. Most confusing address ever. Scootering's been a massive part of my life and I've met all of my best friends that way. I think I've been riding for seven years, something like that. And I don't understand the reason that scooters would be banned because it is a huge part of other people's lives and it doesn't make sense that one thing should be taken away from that. And we should all just be able to get along and ride together and have a good time and not have to worry about one thing being banned and not be able to ride and have fun and do what I love. And among the damage issue, I do believe that skateboards and bikes cause more damage than scooters do. And there are less scooter riders than skateboard and bike, each one. And I know, like Riley said, I know there are places where scooters have damage, but I know many more places where bikes and skateboards have caused much more damage than that. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other citizens' comments this evening?
My name's Dylan Byrd. I live at 703 11th Avenue. I've been riding scooters for about two years. And I moved down here and I probably wouldn't have met any of my wonderful friends that I know now if it wasn't for the skate park and scootering. It's been a huge impact in my life. If I never would have ridden, who knows what hell my life could be. And I don't think scooters cause any more damage than skateboards or bikes or anything you ride. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizens' comments this evening? Well, gentlemen, thank you for coming. And I know it takes, it's a little scary if you haven't come to see council. It's exciting to see some of our younger folks come see us once in a while. Thank you. We'll move on to public hearings and presentations. First item of business is public hearing, CDBG PY 2013-17 Consolidated Plan. Mr. Plaskin.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, public. The first two items you've got on your active agenda are related. The first one that we're going to take a look at is the city's five-year consolidated plan related to community development block grant funding. There was a public hearing already conducted on a draft consolidated plan, but since that time, staff has encountered an opportunity to leverage the funding to a much greater degree and decided to amend the draft of the plan to try to take advantage of that, we'll talk about that in a minute, and restart the public comment period in order to give the public a chance to consider the new proposal or the amended proposal. The opportunity that I had mentioned has to do with public transit and the Federal Transit Administration. And what we'd like to do is to leverage monies from the CDBG program with the FTA to more than double the amount of money that can be put into projects that further promote fair and affordable housing. I'm gonna go through some of the summary of the draft consolidated plan, give a little background on it and go over some of the goals of the plan. This plan is being done in conjunction with a consultant and in conjunction with an advisory committee. The advisory committee is made up of members of beautiful downtown Lewiston, City of Lewiston staff, Community Action Partnership, Family Promise, Idaho Housing and Finance Association, the LCSC Small Business Development, Lewiston School District, Salvation Army, Wells Fargo Home Mortgage, and the YWCA. As part of this process, a big part of the process, we set out to identify the needs in the community relative to affordable housing and some other things related to HUD's programs. On the affordable housing side, through the needs assessment, it was identified that the vacancy rates in the City of Lewiston for, particularly for rental units, is very, very low. That affects housing costs and it makes it difficult for lower-income renters to find housing, especially those renters with poor credit and other barriers because there's much more competition for the few numbers of units that are available. That was one of the needs that was identified. Another one, which is probably well-known, but it's certainly in the plan, and that is that the most common problem having to do with housing affordability in the City of Lewiston has to do with cost burden. And cost burden is just a term that means that people have to spend more than 30% of their household income toward their housing cost, which makes it very, very difficult to find affordable housing. It was found further and more particularly that families with larger households, their needs are not met in terms of the availability of units and the cost of units that can suit their needs. And that has to do primarily with renters seeking three or more bedrooms in their housing. As far as public housing goes, the Idaho Housing and Finance Association manages the Section 8 Housing Voucher Program in the City of Lewiston. There are 349 participants in that voucher program, but there are 639 people on the waiting list. And the average wait time is 28 to 36 months to participate in that program. So there's a huge need there that's undermet. Homelessness, there's an estimate that was done through the needs assessment that estimates on any given night, there are 100 people or more in the City of Lewiston who qualify as homeless. There are different levels of that definition. I'm not gonna go into that detail, but 100's a pretty high number. More sadly than that, of that 100 or more, 73 are families that include children. On the supply side for homelessness, the YWCA has a seven-unit emergency shelter and Family Promise can help a maximum of three families at any given time. And that's operated through the local churches. There are also HUD-related items that monies can be devoted toward that are non-housing specific. Public Facilities was identified as one of those and those include public transit in particular. So any kinds of improvements that make public transit more accessible and more user-friendly are things that are eligible. And those have identified, been identified as being in great need as well. Let's see here. One of the things that was identified specifically through the needs assessment was the need for additional hours of public transit operation, particularly to accommodate the large segment of the shift worker group that we have in the City of Lewiston, people who work nights and shifts. Also, on the non-housing side for community development, identified in the needs assessment were public services. And those have to do with detoxification, rehabilitation, counseling services for substance abuse, life skills training, dental and health care, mental health counseling, nutrition, employment services and training, affordable childcare and case management services. So that's the summary of the needs assessment and the proposed plan. The strategic plan overview of the goals, the first goal that was identified was to preserve and expand decent affordable housing. And that is listed as something to be pursued through improved sustainability of homeownership through housing improvements and assistance to homebuyers, expanding the supply of affordable rental housing, the reduction of homelessness, and the encouragement of fair housing and prevention of housing discrimination. The second goal is to enhance the quality of life and the livability of Lewiston. And the plan seeks to pursue that through improvement of residential and commercial neighborhood safety and livability by expanding or improving public facilities and infrastructure. The third goal in the plan is to provide improved access to employment services and expanded economic opportunities. The expected award for the 2013 program year is $216,143. And add to that what's called a program income, which in reality is receipt by the city of loan payments that have been made out through the program. That's anticipated to be $60,000. So on the numbers side of things, what's being proposed is allocation of those funds plus reprogramming of other funds that remain from programs, program years 2010 and 2012 to primarily for public improvements, facilities, ADA access and sidewalk improvements and transit facilities. And I wanna just mention while I'm thinking about it, your agenda, action item B, or active agenda item B references program year 2011. Everywhere you see the program year 2011, it's actually supposed to be 2010. So I wanted to clarify that. The important thing is that in reallocating and reprogramming the funds that we're talking about, we can leverage $440,000 in FTA matching funds, which is something we've never done before. And if we don't move in this direction, then we would leave that $440,000 in FTA funds on the table. So we go from what we would have had as $320,473 available in the program to make improvements and progress toward housing affordability in City of Lewiston, jumps to $760,473 if we pursue this direction. Let's see here. The other thing I'll just make mention of is that the proposed consolidated plan does talk about administration of the program, does take a lot of staff time to administer this program. Through the program, we are allowed to take up to 20% of the available funding for administrative costs. City of Lewiston Community Development in the past has chosen not to do that. We continue to choose not to do that. $20,000 of our expected allotment would be about $64,000, but we are asking for $5,000 for administrative costs to take out of the funding for projects just to cover pretty much what's out-of-pocket expenses. So with that, I'll end the summary of my presentation of the draft consolidated plan. Again, just remind that the 30-day comment period opened to the public. Because of the change to try to leverage the FTA funds toward public improvements for sidewalks, ADA accessibility and transit facilities, now extends the deadline for public comment to August 7. Council action on this agenda item tonight is not necessary, other than opening a public hearing, receiving any public testimony, and then allowing council to deliberate and direct staff in any way you deem appropriate based on the public testimony. We will come back to council after the end of the public comment period with a final plan proposal for your adoption.
Council, have any questions of Mr. Plaskin at this time? Thank you. Thank you. With that, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing and take testimony for and against the CDBG PY 2013-17 Consolidated Plan. Is there anyone wishing to testify in the public hearing for the CDBG Consolidated Plan? Looks like we have no takers. We'll go ahead and close this hearing. So Mr. Plaskin will be seeing you sometime after the 7th of August with action. Okay? Next item of business is public hearing, PY 2010 and 2012 CDBG Action Plan Amendment and Reprogramming Funds for Sidewalk Transit Shelters and Accessibility. Mr. Plaskin.
Thank you, Mr. Bear. As I mentioned, these items are related to the agenda item you just heard. There are specific actions that are required by the council or requested of the council. They've been combined into a single agenda item. However, two separate actions are necessary because they deal with two different CDBG Action Plan Years. And again, as I mentioned, where in the information you got in your packets, it says program year 2011, it's supposed to have said program year 2010, so I apologize for that. From program year 2010, there remains $11,578, which is being recommended to be reprogrammed toward the public transit, sidewalk and ADA accessibility type projects that I mentioned to you in the previous agenda item to help leverage those FTA funds. And then in the program year 2012, there remains $61,000 in the SNAP program and some related income that, again, is being proposed to be reprogrammed for the public transit, sidewalk, ADA accessibility projects through the new 2013 to 17 Consolidated Plan to leverage the FTA funds. And council's being asked, after receipt of any public testimony on these two requests for reprogramming of those funds, to either approve the reprogramming for each of the two fiscal or program years mentioned, or your other options are to reject the proposals, modify them, or remand them to staff with direction.
Thank you, Mr. Plaskin. Has council got any questions for Mr. Plaskin this evening regarding these two actions? Okay. With that, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing for the plan amendments, the 2010 amendment and reprogramming, and the 2012 amendment and reprogramming of funds for sidewalk transit shelters and accessibility. Is there anyone wishing to testify for or against this reprogramming of funds? See no takers, so we'll go ahead and close this public hearing. I'll entertain a motion to approve- I'll entertain a motion to approve the 2010 plan amendments and reprogramming as proposed.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve the amendment to the program.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the amendments and reprogramming of funds for 2010. Is there any discussion by council? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay. Motion carries six-zero. I'll entertain a motion to approve fiscal year 2012, or plan year 2012 amendments and reprogramming of funds.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the 2012 amendments and reprogramming of funds. Any discussion by council? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six-zero. I clear enough action for those two items, Mr. Plaskin? Okay. Next item of business is public hearing ZA ACI 0113, accepting testimony on a staff recommendation to amend the zoning code of the Lewiston area city of impact regarding the allowance of detached accessory buildings in front yards. Mr. Plaskin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a public hearing on an item that's already been heard by-
Can we get you to move the mic?
Sorry?
Thank you.
This is a public hearing that's already been heard by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Just a little bit of background, Nez Perce County Planning and Building Department has relayed to city community development staff receipt of applications recently, building permit applications recently, which they have been unable to approve without approval of a variance. You're probably aware, variances can be very difficult to obtain because the necessary findings are very strict. And in the cases of the recent permit applications that Nez Perce County has gotten, the variances were not perceived as, as high, as being, having a high chance of success. And usually what happens when a jurisdiction is receiving permit applications or requests that are having to be denied on a regular basis, it's time to take a fresh look at what the regulations are and see if maybe they deserve potential change. So, Nez Perce County had proposed that we take a look at that. I reviewed the situation, and I agreed, after doing a little research and speaking with Allison Thompson Tompkins, the planning, the planner for the Nez Perce County. We could not find any very good reason for the regulation. The regulation, it has to do with the F1 zoning district in the area of city impact. That zoning district has a 20-acre minimum lot size, very big lot size. And there is a regulation in that zoning district that says that if you want to have a detached accessory building on your property, it cannot be located between where the front of the house is and where the street is. Regardless of whether or not the home is set back, you know, 500 feet from the street, and the shop was only going to be 20 feet in front of the home, so the shop's going to be still 480 feet back from the street, it's not allowed. The county zoning ordinance doesn't have any other zoning district that has that rule. The city zoning ordinance doesn't have any others, any other zoning district that has that rule. And so, we've proposed that the rule be amended to allow detached accessory buildings to be located between the front of the house and the street, so long as it meets the minimum requirement for front yard setbacks. The Lewiston Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on this on June 26, and unanimously recommended approval of it. Staff recommends approval of it. Nez Perce County's proceeding on their side with a similar public hearing process, and that's what this public hearing is about.
Counsel, have any questions for Mr. Plaskin regarding the zone amendment? Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead and open this public hearing for ZA ACI 0113. Is there anyone wishing to testify for or against this proposed zone amendment?
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Orton.
Are there, is there other examples of this kind of thing that if we were actually talking to the county and we actually got them to the table, and the talk about the city, the area of impact, that these could be resolved? Is this the kind of thing that we would have in those discussions? Are there others out there? Is this the only one?
I think we hold that, the comments for our discussion for when we have a motion on the floor. Right now, we're taking testimony, counsel. Is there any testimony? If not, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing. I'll entertain a motion to approve the proposed changes of ZA ACI 0113.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve ZA ACI 0113.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ZA ACI 0113. Is there any discussion by council?
I guess my discussion is, we've been trying to get the county to talk to us for a long time on the area of, of city impact, and if that were to happen, I think some of these things could be resolved and not be part of this conversation, but they've got to come to the table first, I guess, right?
Yeah, I guess we'll have the meeting, hopefully after budget session, maybe.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other further discussion by council? Okay, hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay. Motion carries six-zero. Next item of business is a public hearing AP 0113, an appeal of the Planning and Zoning Commission's approval of a conditional use permit for the allowance of recreational vehicle overnight occupancy for the BPO Elks Lodge located on Country Club Drive. Mr. Plaskin.
The conditional use permit application referenced was to establish overnight recreational vehicle parking for the Elks on Country Club Drive, the existing facility. The use permit was approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission on May 8th with a long list of conditions. That decision has been appealed, it's been appealed within the timeframe set forth in the city code. And the city code says on appeals of Planning and Zoning Commission decisions to the city council, the following, "The council may in its sole discretion and without hearing or notice refuse to accept jurisdiction of the appeal, in which case the decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission shall be final." And then it also goes on to say that if you do choose to accept jurisdiction, then you hold your own hearing. There have been, well, we'll talk, we'll talk about the number of parties later, I guess, but in the interest of efficiency and the possibility or likelihood that council would choose to accept jurisdiction, staff did advertise the agenda item tonight for the city council as a public hearing. So, should you choose to accept jurisdiction, you are, you do have the ability to do that now since the notice has already been done. And staff's recommendal, recommendation is to hold, is to hold the hearing. At which point in time, if you do that, then I would go through some of the details of the proposal unless you want to ask me about that or for that information prior to making your decision to accept jurisdiction.
Okay. Well, counsel, I'll entertain a motion to assume jurisdiction of AP 0113.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to accept jurisdiction of AP 0113. Is there any discussion by council? Okay, hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion carries five to one. Mr. Plaskin.
Okay, I'm going to give you, you've got a voluminous amount of information in your packets, and I'm not going to go through anywhere near a large percentage of that tonight. I am going to give you a brief overview of the original staff report that was given to the Planning and Zoning Commission wherein staff recommended approval of the application and whereby Planning and Zoning Commission made its approval. So, the proposal is for 10 motorhome parking spaces for traveling members of the Elks Lodge only, not open to the public. Each motorhome space would have its own access to an electrical pedestal and to water hookup. No gray or black water dumping facilities would be provided. The Elks Lodge facility, for those who are not familiar with it, is a large facility. It's on a very prime piece of property in the city overlooking the Snake River. It sits on about 17 acres. Due to the topography, only about seven acres of that is actually developable. The existing building is a large building, it's over 60,000 square feet. I'm not sure exactly what it is, but I know it's over that. It includes meeting rooms, dining areas, full commercial kitchen, an exercise facility, hot tub, sauna, bar, lounge, about 200 parking stall, parking lot. And yeah, it's a large existing facility. It is located in a residential neighborhood, in a residential zoning district. We'll take a look at some maps. I do want to point out that the property does set below Country Club Drive, and generally speaking, the lots across the street, on the other side of Country Club Drive from the Elks are at yet a little bit higher elevation than the road itself. The developed part of the Elks property sets about 12 feet down from the road. Actually, that ranges from 12 feet to 20 feet below the road. There are two driveways to the property, and again, we'll look at some maps. The primary entrance is on the north end of the property, and that goes to the 200-stall parking space or parking lot and to the building itself. And then if you continue to drive through that, you can get to currently undeveloped part of the property toward the south end where there's a second driveway. And we'll talk about some of the detail on that second access. I'm going to go ahead and jump to some maps, and then we'll look at some photographs. Going to go old-school on the elbow here. Okay, so, what you're looking at here is a, a portion of the zoning map for the city of Lewiston. It's actually an aerial photograph with a zoning overlay on it. North is up. This is Snake River Avenue. This is the Snake River. This is Clarkston. This is the Elks property located right here in the center of the map. And you can see the R2 designation associated with this color, which is a low-density, single-family Here's another aerial photograph of the, of the area. This one's at a little bit larger of a scale. This is the existing Elks Lodge facility. This is Country Club Drive. This is where Country Club Drive and Snake River Avenue intersect. And so, it's quite a distance to traverse to get up to the Elks Lodge located here. This one's in black and white, and I'm not sure, yeah, you can make it out pretty well, I think. The squiggly lines that you see running this way at various intervals are topographic contours. These are 10-foot contour intervals, and it's just meant to verify or show the extreme slope of the west half of the property. This is probably the one that's deserving of the most attention in the deliberations tonight. This is a blow-up of the south end of the property. So this is Country Club Drive. This is West Reservoir Drive. This is the second driveway that I mentioned just a bit ago at the south end of the property. And there are three areas here that are labeled Tier 1, Tier 2, and Tier 3. You can see the very south corner of the Elks building right in this location here. So this area is the area in question for the proposed RV parking. There are electric pedestals spaced at about 18 feet apart, I believe, located right here. And the way this situation is, you've got a drop-down, an embankment of about, oh, I don't know, 10 or 12 feet down to what's labeled here as Tier 1, this gravel area here. Then you've got a gentle slope down to what's labeled as Tier 2, and then another gentle slope down to what's labeled as Tier 3. And then here, to the west or the left of Tier 3, is where it starts dropping off very steeply down the Snake River. So, the areas that are proposed for RV parking are right here on Tier 2 and Tier 3, on either side of the row of the electrical pedestals, and also where there are the water hookups. I'm going to, I'm going to go ahead now, actually, I guess we'll look at some photographs.
Just while you have that last photograph there, Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question? Relevant to the photograph. What's the projected cost for the Elks to develop that area?
I do not know. The applicants here, they can probably give you some representation of that. So on the photographs, this is looking south, down Country Club Drive, you can see there's no sidewalk on the west side, there is a sidewalk on the east side. So this is the primary entrance, some would consider it the only entrance, into the facility. This is the sign directing or identifying the facility. Another shot, basically the same thing. This is looking the other direction, north, on Country Club Drive. This is looking northwest at the, right here, can you see the cursor? Is that okay? This is the southerly entrance to the property. The one that I showed you goes down to the gravelled area that's proposed for the RV parking. So you can see the, the site distance, the, the street radius here, and you can kind of tell, I think, that there's a drop-off that occurs right here. This is another similar view, looking the same direction, north on Country Club Drive. You can see one of the houses across the street there, and its elevation higher than the road, which again, is higher yet than the proposed RV parking. This is looking down that southerly driveway. You can see the Snake River over here. You can see the electrical pedestals down here where the RVs are proposed to be available, or the RV slots are proposed to be available for the members. Another shot, looking basically west, northwest, from the top of the slope of the southerly drive down to the proposed RV parking area. This is a little further north on Country Club Drive than the southerly entrance, and without going on to the neighbor's property, I'm, I'm basically standing at the far side, the easterly side of the sidewalk on the east side of Country Club Drive, and you can just see the electric- see the electrical pedestals running right across here. Another very similar shot, but you've got a part, or you've got the building also in the background here. This is taken from across the street in the right-of-way. Another shot, looking at, this is Tier One. This is slopes down, and this is Tier Two, and then Tier Three's on the other side of the pedestals. This is looking north across what is Tier One here. So, this is the embankment that goes up to Country Club Drive, and this slopes down again to Tier Two. And again, there are the electrical pedestals with the Elks facility in the background. Looking directly north on Tier One, this is looking up that southerly driveway, so you can see the slope of that. You can also see one of the neighbor's houses across the street. This is looking from Tier Two to the southwest, south-southwest at the Snake River. So, this is one of the views that are available from the proposed RV parking area. This is looking up the embankment from Tier Two. This is the slope going up to, this is Tier One, running horizontally here, and again, the embankment going up to Country Club Drive, and one of the homes across the street. This is looking southerly across Tier Two. You can see the electrical pedestals spaced thusly. This is looking at one of the homes across the street, again, from down at the north end of the proposed RV parking area. This is looking north across where the, one of the drive aisles is, to the paved parking at the north end of the property. This is, this shot is taken very close to the north end of where the electrical pedestals are, and I just took it to show proximity to a dumpster that would be available for the RV occupants. This is looking northeast to some of the homes across the street from the proposed RV parking area. This is looking due west from Tier Two. Across the hillside is Clark, or across, that hillside across the way is Clarkston. Again, looking east from the RV parking area, up to one of the houses across the street. This is looking from Tier Three down the embankment to the Snake River. Another shot of the Snake River from the proposed RV parking area. This is, the reason I show this is because one of the conditions I had recommended and that the Planning and Zoning Commission imposed was that a more suitable wheel-stop barrier be placed along this length to prevent any RVs or associated vehicles from accidentally going a little too far and then going down the embankment. Some excess gravel that's left there to maintain the driveway. This is a shot of a house just recently built down the slope to the south. This is Duffy Boulevard. Again, the Snake River from the RV parking area. And again, and again. This is the west side of the Elks Lodge and the driveway that accesses a service and storage yard area. This is looking down the slope behind the Elks facility itself. So, these shots are all taken north and west of the proposed RV park area. This is a trail where people have been walking just behind the facility itself, along the top of the embankment. It's hard to see here, but there's actually a path that's worn in the grass from people walking down behind here to the river. Storage yard area underneath the back of the building. Some of this stuff is, these photos aren't necessarily directly related, but they are very representative of the views that visitors to the Elks facility have when they visit the property, and I think that's an important thing to keep in mind. Again, houses across the street. So, this is the north end, or I'm sorry, the south end, the paved parking lot, and the proposed RV parking is up here. You can see some landscaping between the paved parking lot and Country Club Drive over The unscreened dumpsters as viewed from the street level here in this shot. And this is taken from street level, looking south-southwest to the proposed RV parking Same thing, street level. The southerly driveway, radius and slope. Southerly driveway slope up. Tier Three to the left, pedestals, Tier Two to the right. So, again, RV parking would be down here on Tier Three and up here on Tier Two. That's what's proposed and approved by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And back to the beginning. What I'd like to do now, before I entertain questions or you open it up for public testimony, is let you know what the Planning and Zoning Commission's written approval was. Their approval was, or their decision was to approve the conditional use permit, subject to the following conditions: that the southerly access to Country Club Drive be signed "No Motorhome/RV Access," and it be signed that way for both ingress and egress; that a guardrail be installed, it doesn't necessarily have to be a guardrail, but it meant to be that wheel-stop type of configuration that I was talking about, to prevent somebody from accidentally backing down the hill, down to Snake River Avenue; to prevent motorhomes from going down the hill to the west of the third tier; that electric and water hookups not exceed ten in number; that the applicant submits a landscape plan for staff approval prior to the opening of the motorhome spaces for use, to include ground cover, shrubs, and trees, and either drought-tolerant plantings or a plumbed watering system; tree species and planting locations shall be chosen so as not to take away prominent views desired by residents of the homes on the east side of Country Club Drive, but also to help provide some shade for the motorhome spaces. The locations of the trees would be negotiated by staff with the neighbor, by staff with the neighbors, to try to ensure that they were satisfied that any landscaping wasn't going to block views; that the facility be signed for Elks member use only; that the applicants be vigilant in enforcing the proposed rules and regulations governing the use of the motorhome spaces. There are proposed rules of operation in your packets. The applicant can go into the details on those; that the applicant add to the rules of the ones that were originally proposed, this is back at the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing; that outdoor use of radios and lighting occur in such a manner, not occur in such a manner as to cause a nuisance to a neighbor; that the applicant provides screening of the dumpsters, in other words, visual screening, so they're not visible, or as visible at least; that the applicant keep trash receptacles for motorhome use no further than three-hundred-and-fifty feet away from the, from any of the electrical pedestals; that eligible visitors, i.e. members, not be required to pay a fee to use the motorhome rest space; that donations could be accepted, but they could be used as deemed appropriate by the Elks Club. Also, further, that the Elks Club not enact rules, policies, or practices which would have the effect of requiring fees to use the rest areas; that visitors display permission to stay pass in a prominent, visible location on the RV, and that the applicant agree to allow law enforcement to enter the premises to inspect for such passes in response to a complaint from a neighbor. And then the last one, which has already been pursued and looked at by staff, was that permits and inspections for the electric and water be confirmed. We've had inspectors out there, and they've verified that those, the work done to install those, it was proper. So, that was the decision of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I'd be happy to entertain questions now, later, or both.
Counselor, have any questions of Mr. Plaskin at this time? Mr. Mayor?
Joe, the pedestals that are now, they're there now. I assume that they anticipated having this quite a while ago. Were they done per code, and were their permits taken out when those pedestals were put in?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Plaskin, refresh my memory. I think this was before Council and P&amp;Z, once before, in like 2001, somewhere in there?
It's got a longer history than that. I think it's been ongoing since 1996. It's been looked at by different groups of Planning and Zoning Commission, different groups of Council, different groups of staff, and it's been looked at in different ways. So, it's got quite a long history to it.
Counselor Stevenson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just for the sake of information here this evening, what was the vote on P&amp;Z to approve the conditional permit?
Tell me in just a minute. Four to one for approval.
Is it appropriate to ask now about some of the use methods or?
Yes.
Okay. So, the three tiers, what is Tier One doing then? What will be going on on Tier One?
As far as I know, related to the conditional use permit application for RV parking, nothing.
Is it possible that that would expand? Was there any part of that in the plan, or will that be a possibility?
No part of that in the plan, no possibility of that through the current approval.
But it could be.
Theoretically.
Counselor Stevenson, I think part of the process, once we're done questioning Mr. Plaskin, we'll have the applicant come up and do their presentation for us.
Well, that's why I wondered why they should ask some of these things.
Yeah, because I have some of the same questions myself. And then, just for everybody here, I assume you're all here for this issue, is we'll have the applicant come and speak to us before we open the public hearing. Then we'll open the public hearing. I'll take testimony for the appeal. I'll take testimony then against the appeal. Then we'll allow the applicant to come and, for rebuttal of any comments made. Then we'll close the public hearing at that point. So, hopefully, the process is clear there. So, Counselor Stevenson.
Well, I have one more that perhaps is germane to this period of time then. And what were the primary objections at the time to the development, I guess we'd call it?
Well, I'd prefer to let the neighbor speak for themselves. You've got the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing meeting minutes in your packets. Briefly, my observation is that they had to do with visibility of RVs from their properties and property values, as well as potential nuisance conditions.
Density and length of stay didn't enter in?
Again, I'm not going to presume to speak for the neighbors.
Well, as far as what came out in the P&amp;Z hearing? Not that you recall.
It may have been mentioned. I don't recall that as being a significant issue.
Yeah, but it wasn't a major, okay.
But I don't, like I said, I don't, somebody else may view that differently.
Okay. Any other questions of Mr. Plaskin at this time? Okay. Thank you. I want to have the applicant come up and address counsel regarding this application.
Looking for the appeal letter for the?
The Elks. For the Elks. This is for the Elks.
For the ones that put in the appeal?
No, no. This is for the Elks Lodge.
My name is Alan Carbonaro. I live at thirteen fifty-three North Viewpoint Drive, Lewiston, Idaho.
Mr. Carbonaro, just one second. I've got a process question for our city attorney. Were it's an appeal, do we still consider the Elks the applicant and hear from them? Or is that appropriate?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think just for expediency, you have to, because the Planning and Zoning Commission is precluded from testifying before you, so.
Okay. Thank you. All right. I wanted to make sure. Okay, Mr. Carbonaro, thank you.
Unfortunately, I set myself, I figured the appeal would be addressing first, so I had basically answers to their concerns. Just give me a minute to organize here. Basically, I'm here to address the concerns of complaints mentioned in the appeal that was filed on June fifth, 2013.
Can I get you to move the microphone so we can hear you?
Against the ruling by the Planning Commission for the Elks Rest Area.
Mr. Mayor? Yes. Would you please ask the? Maybe just turn the mic more to your mouth there. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Carbonaro.
We at the Lodge have done everything we can to satisfy our neighbors and alleviate any potential problems. Both of our neighbors are in favor of it based upon the survey that was done by our Lodge and by residents that attended the hearing. We represented both sides at the last hearing, both for the for and the against, and for the for votes outnumbered the against votes by a three-to-one margin. Our neighbors need to understand that we are a private club that was established long before they bought their homes in this area. We are not going to allow non-Els members to use the proposed facility, and we also do not anticipate our visiting members to stay in our rest area for any long periods of time. Once we have our operating permit, most of, if not all of, their concerns will be addressed and corrected. At present, we have no control when or members come and visit or when they leave. The set of rules that we have put together address all of these concerns plus additional ones. I have tried to answer all of the complaints and concerns at present presented to me as in the appeal letter, and I don't know if Joel passed out my response to it. What I'd like to point out is there was, on the appeal, there was about eight or nine residents that applied for, or signed, or were used, their names were used in it. I have a picture of where their homes are, and most of the concerns we hear are mostly that they're concerned about their views. Out of the eight or nine people that signed the appeal, probably six of them don't even see the Lodge from their homes. And again, it's a matter of they're concerned about their property values. Their property values are not based on what's parked in our parking lot. It's based on what the properties are selling for next to them. And when you have ten or twelve homes for sale next door, of course, your properties will vary depending on the prices of those homes that are being sold. And again, there's no evidence that us parking one or two motorhomes in our parking lot will affect their property values. And that seems to be the biggest concern they have is their so-called property values. The other one is their views. For some reason, they feel when they bought their home, they were entitled to a view. I don't ever seen that in a real estate contract where that was established, and if it was, they should try to get their money back, because I don't think anybody has a right to a view. The Lodge was established in 1972. When it was established, there was- Uh, when it was established, uh, there was nothing there. Even the road was not there. It was kind of a cow trail. The housing development was actually, the property that the, the housing development is on was actually owned by the lodge at one time. And when it was sold to a developer, he developed it. We were county at one time and the city, uh, basically acquired the property or, uh, brought it into their jurisdiction and established an R-two zoning. In that R-two zoning, we were grandfathered, uh, certain rights. And, uh, one of those rights established that we had the right to expand or extend our business. And, uh, that's basically what we're doing right now is extending our, our services to our, our members. The, we are one of the few lodges that do not provide, uh, a formal, uh, parking area for motorhomes. Many of the members travel from, uh, location to location, uh, visiting different lodges. Most of these motorhomes are, cost more than my house. And, uh, they, they travel all over the country. We've had several people visit our lodge in the last month. Unfortunately, we've had to have them park up in the upper parking lot because, again, we, uh, chose not to let them park in that area. That area was actually, uh, zoned as an auxiliary parking lot. So technically, we could park vehicles down there anytime we want. Uh, it's in our building plan. The reasons that it was not, uh, ever finalized was because of the variance that, uh, and the misunderstanding of the R-two zoning, uh, for us. And, uh, uh, we, uh, we've taken all the steps this go-around to, uh, basically survey the neighbors. We sent out over twenty-five questionnaires to all of the nearest neighbors to see what their complaints were. Over fourteen of them were for it. A couple never responded and the rest were against it. And they're good, and the reasons they put, and I have copies of them, they should, there may be some in the, uh, the original, uh, application. Some of the reasons they had was, uh, it's gonna mess my view up or, uh, it's never been there before. Or, uh, it's not appropriate for the area. Those were the basic comments on all the, uh, or on most of the, uh, uh, surveys. What I'm gonna do is let you open it up to, um, to the, uh, public and then I'll address, I'll come back and address it, uh, the concerns that they may have. Now, there were some questions about, uh, budgets. Do we have, what kind of money we have budgeted for this? It's been real hard to do a budget and we didn't know if we were gonna have approval or not. Uh, we've done little bits and pieces, uh, here and there, but again, it's not something that we're, we could go ahead with and do a formal budget because, one, we haven't gotten any approval on, uh, a landscaping plan because, uh, again, it was not something that was, uh, considered when we, uh, applied for the, uh, the, uh, limited use permit. Uh, we do know for a fact that we're gonna be doing some excavating. Uh, again, the, the lodge is basically, uh, uh, is a volunteer organization. We do most of our work ourselves. We have six hundred and forty members that, uh, tend to help out, uh, when asked. Uh, they also give us money to do projects. Uh, we just put a twenty-two thousand dollar air conditioner up on our roof that was basically, uh, paid for by our members. So when we start this project, uh, uh, there is money put aside for it. Uh, we're, I don't believe the project will cost more than three or four thousand dollars when it's all said and done, and that probably will include the landscaping. Again, most of the labor is gonna be done by our, our members. The two biggest areas that I see would be the landscaping and probably the screening around the, uh, dumpster because we're deciding, do we wanna put chain link fence or do we wanna put a cinder block, make it more of a, a permanent fixture? Mostly because we're worried about trucks, dump trucks backing into it and damaging it. So if we put something strong there, they ain't gonna back into it too easily. Uh, as far as the retaining wall for the, uh, the hill, uh, we're debating to do either railroad ties or, uh, concrete blocks. And I think the concrete blocks are kinda winning out because the price difference is not that much different. Again, uh, labor-wise, it's usually done by our, uh, members. And, uh, so our costs will be minimal. And most of the heavy costs have already been done, the electrical and the plumbing was put in a number of years ago. Uh, we just had PG or Vista out to inspect it to make sure it was to code. Uh, it is actually locked off now so that it's, it hasn't been able to be used. And, uh, does anybody have any other questions about our?
Counsel will have for the questions of Mr. Carbonaro? Counselor Stevenson or Counselor Daniel?
Was the response you were talking about in regards to the appeal, is it, is it this one? Because there's no signature, so I was just, I wanna make sure you asked if Joel passed it out to us. I wasn't sure if this is the right one there.
Depends on whose it was. Was there a different one?
This is what they were given. Is it the one where it states?
They appealed on or is this a?
For, for council reference. I'm, I'm looking halfway through.
Yeah, that's, that would be the one.
Page numbers. It's page one. But it's halfway through the document, so it, it's about halfway through. On the side, it says, uh, response is appeal dated.
Is he looking at one? They need another copy of that or is it?
I just wanted to make sure I was looking at the right one.
Counselor Stevenson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I have a logistics question. It's probably really in the weeds, but I just wanna visualize this operation. So when, when the, um, RVs or motorhomes come down that, or come in that southern entrance, do they, do they back in?
Well, they wouldn't be coming in from the southern entrance.
Oh, they're not?
They'll be coming in from the northern entrance. The southern entrance will be marked as, uh, no RVs or, uh, to exit or enter.
Oh, okay.
The southern entrance will be more than, almost an emergency exit if something, you know, it's a second egress. Uh, the driveway, the northern end of it is clearly marked Elks, uh, has a lighted sign on it. Uh, there's no really tight turns. Your question about tier one, uh, tier one is primarily gonna be used for turnaround as the, the RVs will be pulling in on an angle, uh, basically coming in from the north, pulling in core, towards the south, uh, I guess that's southwest. When they, they'll be backing out a little bit, making it, going straight towards the south, going up the, the slight incline, uh, and then making a turn on the tier one to exit out of the north end again. If we use the, the tier one for anything, it'll either be for auxiliary parking for cars when we have events or, uh, a lot of these motorhomes pull, uh, cars behind them, so it'll probably be an area for, uh, them to park those cars. That's so they wouldn't block the, uh, uh, the normal path, uh, the motorhomes parking.
So it would be, yeah, just pulling in or backing in, no drive-through?
That's correct, uh.
Okay. Is there going to be a length restriction on any of these vehicles?
Uh, we haven't discussed that. The, as far as, uh, we had a, one of our members has a forty-foot motorhome and she had no, I don't think they make it too much bigger than that. And she had, plus it's, uh, was a fifth wheel and, uh, she had no problem moving it around. It was a woman driving, so. Not that she's a bad driver, I'm just saying it was a woman driving, so.
Danger, danger.
She, uh, handles it real well and, uh, like I said, uh, she was able to make the turns, uh, so, uh, and we'll probably use her to test it when we get ready to make the final, uh, landscaping changes.
I guess I have a couple of concerns. One is where we don't have a landscaping plan yet. I think the neighbors in the area, uh, tree heights, those type of things, the canopy in there, I assume you're gonna try to get some, some shape for those type of motorhomes?
Uh, the landscaping, uh, I'm not actually doing it myself. There, one of the other members is putting it together and I don't think he's here tonight, but, uh, he said he would have it ready as soon as we had a, a go-ahead on it, so, uh...
I'd like to see that before the go-ahead went. But anyhow, uh, I, I guess I'll look at the, the, having this, uh, area for members only.
Can I make a statement about the landscaping plan? Uh, for some reason, the landscaping plan has gotten way out of proportion. Originally, well, when we talked about landscaping, we were gonna level the ground off and put rocks down, uh, to firm up the land so motorhomes didn't sink in the mud or whatever. The object was not to make the, make it a park. We don't want members to stay there forever. We want them to come and visit and eventually leave. The more comfortable we make it, the more they're gonna wanna stay and the longer they're gonna wanna stay. So, uh, when we originally proposed the landscaping, that was the initial intent. And since then, all of a sudden, we have trees, we have whatever else we're gonna wind up putting in there. So, uh, it, uh, the landscaping requirement did catch us a little bit off guard because, again, uh, when we were talking landscaping, it was basically re-escavating the, the land so it's a little flatter, uh, pulling back, uh, the, uh, R-one, uh, hill a little bit so that, uh, the R-two have a little more room to navigate and then put a, a couple layers of five-eight stone down. So, again, this was not something that we had planned to make it a, a comfortable, extremely comfortable facility as far as, uh, uh, putting picnic tables out there and fire pits and all that other. This was a place that, uh, uh, members could come, spend a night or two and then move on to their next, uh, lodge if that's what they're doing. We put a limitation on how long they could stay. Again, uh, we don't want this to turn into a trailer park or something where somebody decides they're gonna spend the whole summer here. Uh, this is, uh, basically a limited access, uh, area and, uh, members will have to be, members, current members. And, uh, uh, again, as, the more comfortable we make it, the, the more they're gonna wanna stay. So, uh, we will comply with what the city requires, but I just wanted, that's one reason why we don't have a, a formal landscaping. Uh, the, the formal landscaping kinda got thrown out of the window when all of a sudden they decided to put trees and stuff on it and, uh, that's, we haven't had the chance to address that. As soon as we get approval, we will, uh, I will submit the, uh, the landscaping.
Again, I guess that's why I asked the question. I, I didn't, I didn't understand your landscaping plan or saw it, or see a copy of it, so, uh, that's, uh, you know, when you, when you, when you approve things like this and all of a sudden, three, four years down the road, then all of a sudden, you have a new exalted ruler, you have somebody else coming into power and all of a sudden, some trees go up. So, I, I guess that's kinda, I guess that's kinda my concern in any of these type of situations is here's the plan today, what's it gonna be three years, four years down the road?
Well, on the original, uh, app, not application, but the original approval, they had given us six months to comply. And that was one reason why we didn't rush into this because, you know, going through all the cost of developing a landscaping plan and stuff and then having, uh, the committee say no to us, uh, we've gone through this before and, uh, we, it just, we held off on it until then.
Okay.
And some of that is my fault. I could've had the landscaping plan here, but I didn't think it was necessary.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. Uh, another question is, uh, you say that this is just for members only. So member Bob comes in a motorhome and he's got his Grandma Jane in another motorhome and he's got the next-door neighbor in another motorhome. Are those people gonna be allowed to stay in there or how are you gonna convince your member that you can stay here, but your family and other people gotta go somewhere else?
Uh, our policies usually are members and guests, uh, so I would have to say at this point in time.
So now guests have come into play all of a sudden here, right?
Uh, I would have to say yes at this point in time.
Okay, so that's, that's something we need to know. Another, uh, question I have is, is, uh, and believe me, I, I belong to a fraternal organization and, and to help, your membership is, is commendable. That's what you wanna do is when they come here, you wanna make them feel comfortable and, and give them all the amenities that they need. Now you have a member who's maybe done on his luck, he's got this motorhome, uh, comes to Lewiston looking for a job, doesn't have a home. Can I park there for a month?
Our, our plan is ten days maximum with a, with a forty-eight.
Can he leave for ten days or could leave for a, or be there ten days, leave for a day and come back for another ten days?
Uh, we have, I think I have on the, uh, the plans, uh, forty-eight hour intervals.
Okay.
Uh, most of our members, what they would do is, would be coming in, spending a day or two here, going someplace to another lodge.
Okay.
And they maybe decide to come back through our area and, uh, they would like to probably stay again. So, uh, we did put a forty-eight hour, uh, limitation, or is they can't come back in for at least forty-eight hours.
So give me an estimate on how many members do you think would come in any given weekend? I'd assume you'd have some, you, you wouldn't have any show up, you wouldn't have anybody there, state convention, it's gonna be full, uh, some rally of some sort, there, there, you're gonna have, so how many weekends do you think that's gonna be?
I would say, you know, you might see a, a full camping area or motorhome area or that area be full in, during the rodeo. We see.
Well, they can come out to the rodeo grounds, we have a place for them out there. Go ahead.
We have, uh, like I said, I would say we probably will see maybe, if we see one or two motorhomes a week, it's gonna be a lot. Around the holidays, it could be, uh, uh, you know, if we could actually fill up around a holiday. Again, we've not had the opportunity to, uh, try this to see what it's like. Actually, in the, uh, I have, uh, brochures that show you how many mo, uh, locations have these type of facilities. Uh, and we're listed in that as not having, uh, any parking area. So, uh, it's hard to say. We do have people just stop by and pull into our parking lot and they fall under the seventy-two hour rule. And that's one of our problems. We don't have any control over them. They, we come in the morning, we find a motorhome sitting in our parking lot. Uh, if we check to see who they are, they're usually, uh, in ninety-nine percent of the time, they're, they are Elk members. Uh, sometimes they're our neighbors. As far as the, uh, the amount of homes that, or motorhomes we'll get in that area, I would say on the average, we'll probably get maybe one a week. And, uh, based on past, uh, experience, during the winter, I suspect we'll have none. You know, it's not your, uh, skiing area, so, uh, uh, I would suspect probably from, I'd say November to probably March, uh, we'll see zero occupancy. During the Fourth of July, I suspect we could see, you know, half a dozen to, uh, a full house. Right after that, I, I suspect we'll just see the transient. Now, that could change once, uh, we were able to post in the, uh, Elk Magazine that we do have facilities.
Thank you, sir.
Counselor Daniel?
I think, uh, one of his responses, you made a good point that you've chosen in the past not to plant any tall hedges or trees or put up a big fence that actually would block the view. And I think that was a pretty good point in, uh...
Well, that's, that's one of the reasons why we were surprised when this, the city's requested that, because we're doing everything we can to not block the view on our neighbors. And, uh, uh, to put a shade on, over a motorhome means that we have to have a tree that's over twelve feet high and, uh, uh, which will spread out over a larger area. And, uh, uh, it will start blocking, so the placement of those trees are gonna be extremely critical if, if that is still a requirement that we have to fulfill.
I guess my question, in what I think is a relatively conflicted situation here, um, all week long, I've been trying to figure out, what does the Elks really get out of this?
Services to our members. You know, the, the amount of money we're gonna make over it is probably nothing compared to what we'll get out of recognition from other clubs, uh, that are, that already have this. Uh, we are the, one of the largest clubs left in the United States. Uh, most of the clubs have downsized. Uh, they sold off their property, uh, and maybe cut their lodges in half or even by a third or more. Like I said, in, in Idaho, we are probably the largest, uh, lodge left. Uh, we're second in membership. And again, the, the Elks basically, whole operation is based on services to its members and to the, uh, community. So whatever money we normally get out of this, as far as rents, uh, well, not rents, but from donations when people come in, uh, will be more them using our lodge, uh, spending money, drinking, having dinner. That's where the revenues will come in from. What the city will see is most... Uh, what the city will see is, most of these motor homes burn a lot of gas. Uh, they come in, they're gonna not only eat at the lodge, they're gonna eat at restaurants, they're gonna take tours, uh, uh, you know, we're gonna make Lewiston a destination place for those members. Uh, right now, when they come in, uh, the nearest motor home facility for them to park at is Moscow, uh, Walla Walla or Coeur d'Alene. Uh, both, all three of those have facilities, and, uh, uh, so, again, we're trying to get Lewiston back on the map as far as, uh, from the Elk organization. Uh, so what we're gonna get out of it is just the services for our members.
I'm still having a, I'm still having a disconnect, but that comes for our discussion later, right? At this point, at this point, we're still asking questions. Um, my, my question that I was going to ask, and, and you went ahead and answered some of it, which is fine, what we saw up here is not particularly attractive. You know, if somebody has a hundred thousand dollar motor home pulling into the facility that you have, you know, that we have seen here, and flattened rock and, and basic landscape, all I'm seeing here is a business plan that says, I'm trying to save our member twenty to forty dollars to, going out to Hell's Gate, and that they may direct those dollars into, into drinking at our facility, eating at our facility, they may have the convenience of using the exercise equipment, et cetera. It, it seems to me like it's a flawed business plan. I've been looking at that all week long. I, I've watched the Elks look for the last ten, fifteen years at things to keep the membership up, keep people coming. Somehow, I'm still not buying, and I, I guess that's why I asked you the question, what do they get out of it? Because they don't have a view that they're pulling in, so they're viewing sideways from their motor homes, they're viewing out of the front end or the back end of their motor homes. So, the only view they're getting is from the Elks Lodge itself. I, I'm still failing to see what, other than the good food, and we've all enjoyed that out there, that, I mean, I'm, I'm not telling you that you don't have a good business, because you do.
Well, as I, as we-
And I've danced, I've danced a good many nights out there.
As we reiterated, uh, let me reiterate the whole thing, uh, this is a rest area. This isn't, uh, you know, we, we aren't peddling a view. Uh, we're, you know, uh, an Elk member, and I have, I, I have friends that do this, I mean, they, and there's probably some people in here that do it. That, that's what they do for vacations, they go from lodge to lodge. Some of these lodges that have parking areas right in the middle of the city, uh, yes, it saves them money because they don't have to pay the forty or fifty or sixty dollars a night for, uh, a parking area. As far as the, uh, Hell's Gate Park, uh, during the summer, you need a year's reservation to get in there. And then if you're here visiting, uh, if you, you're out here to visit relatives, and they wanna come and visit you, eat, relatives has to pay five dollars to get into the park every time they come and visit you. So, again, this is basically a service or a convenience for our members. Uh, it, it, this wasn't to make a million dollars off of it, this is not something that we had planned. Uh, again, all we're trying to do is extend our existing business, and that is providing, providing a service for our members. Uh, what that will hopefully bring is, members say, gee, I could go to Lewiston and stay, stay in their park, maybe I'll become a member, and, uh, they'll join the lodge, uh, or one of the lodges. Uh, and again, I have books that show you, there's probably a thousand places these members could travel to, and basically, uh, stay for nothing. Uh, I'm not a, an RVer, so I can't say how much it really costs to, uh, go from place to place, but, uh, the object was to get Lewiston Elk Lodge back on the map, and to hopefully bring business to the city and provide a service for our members.
Counselor-
I hope that answered your question.
Counselor Stevenson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, right now, as it is, people can stay for seventy-two hours in the regular parking lot, they're boondocking in the-
Uh, as far as I understand, the, uh, the R2 zoning allows somebody to park on their, in their parking lot for seventy-two hours, uh, now, and that's an occupied vehicle. If somebody wanted to park their motor home in our parking lot now, and not occupy it, they could probably park it forever there. Uh, you know, we don't have any restrictions on that, so, uh, uh, but for an occupied vehicle, it's seventy-two hours, I believe.
And do you find that very many people do that, or do most of them wanna be hooked up to-
Uh, you know, it's hard to say, 'cause, uh, you know, dry camping is what they call dry camping, I guess what they're calling it. Uh, most of them are just coming through the night, they're looking for a place to spend the night, so they'll park there. You'll see it a lot in Walmart and stuff like that, where they'll just park for overnight. Uh, if they have power, uh, yeah, they'll, they would hook up to it because, uh, they wouldn't have to run their generators, and, uh, uh, if they have refrigerators and stuff, they can keep them, uh, cool. Uh, so, uh, I would assume they would plug it in if they had the opportunity.
Do you have very many people who come and stay in the parking lot for seventy-two hours?
Uh, I think from, we'll say from, uh, this year, we had probably more than normal, because we had the state convention, we had about two-hundred-and-twenty people here from, uh, all parts of the, of Idaho, and actually, uh, Oregon and, uh, Montana. Uh, we had some that we had to turn away, they wanted to bring their motor homes and didn't have reservations for any place, and couldn't get into Hell's Gate, so they, uh, they didn't bring their motor homes. Uh, we had probably about five people park in our parking lot, uh, not in the area that was designated. Uh, we, based on advice, we were, we kept, uh, we, uh, basically closed that whole area off, because we didn't wanna have any issues with the neighbors. Uh, so, again, uh, I'd say from June first to now, we've probably had maybe, uh, eight or nine motor homes, and I don't think anybody stayed more than a couple of days.
Okay, thanks.
You talked about, uh, other lodges in Moscow and Kellogg and Coeur d'Alene, I think it was Kellogg, uh, to where they offer this, uh, to their members. Are they located in a residential area, or are they located in a commercial area?
Uh, there's quite a few of them, some are actually in the city. Uh, if they have a parking lot, they allow their members to park there. Uh, some are dry hookups, uh, or no hookups, rather, or dry camping, and some have full facilities.
So, those three, are they, are they in a commercial area? Coeur d'Alene is not in a commercial area? Okay.
Those are all the different sites that you could drive to and park your motor home throughout the country, and I'd say at least eighty percent of them are in some sort of residential area. Now, what's a residential area is another question. Uh, I mean, if it's a, uh, you know, I, I find it, you know, if you look at our side of the road, we're, you know, we're not really a residential area, we've got nothing between us for, uh, almost a half a mile on one side, and we have houses on the other side. Uh, I know Bremington is in a residential area, uh, but it's in a county, so it's not a, a city limit area. And that was the only place I have been to that, uh, I had noticed, uh, RV next to a, a housing development.
Thank you.
Counselor Daniel?
Uh, Counselor Cannon's point, what, what do you think would happen to the land if the Elks Lodge wasn't where it is now, and they had to move somewhere?
If the Elks Lodge doesn't survive or have decided to sell that building off, which it was for sale for a while, and, uh, we were managed to, uh, recover, uh, that property would probably be sold to a developer who would probably tear the building down and build eight or nine homes to it, or some other structure. I think the R2 zoning does allow for, uh, a fourteen-unit apartment complex if, uh, they so chose to build on it that way. So, uh, I would assume a builder would, some developer would buy it and build on it.
So, by doing this, the plan for the RVs, you hope to help, uh, keep the lodge there?
Uh, again, this is not gonna be a, a major source of income for the, the lodge. This is going to be a service for, uh, our, our members, and hopefully, we'll be able to attract more members, uh, to join the lodge, both, uh, locally and from distant areas. Like all fraternal organizations, most of us are scrambling, trying to get new members. Uh, you know, people just don't have the time anymore to belong to fraternal organizations, so, uh, we're trying to do everything we can to resurrect these, uh, organizations and to give members a reason for joining. But getting back to your original question, uh, the property would probably be developed, uh, it's too good of a, or too nice of a piece of property to be left vacant. Uh, to lose the lodge, Lewiston actually would lose a, a benefit, because we do an awful lot of community services. Uh, we are, uh, an area for people that can't afford the prices of some of these bigger, uh, hotels and menus for weddings, so we are a place that they could find a reasonably-priced, uh, alternative. And, uh, uh, we have, uh, several charity organizations that hold, uh, events with us. Uh, we still are probably one of the largest, uh, buildings in the area that could hold a thousand people.
Any other questions for Mr. Carbonaro?
Now, I said, after, if yous want, uh, after the other opposing group has their say, I'd like to have an opportunity to come back to the restroom.
Yeah, you'll have the chance after we close the hearing for rebuttal, Mr. Carbonaro.
Thank you.
Okay. So, counsel, we've, we've, uh, heard from staff, the staff report and, uh, testimony from the applicant. So now, I'll go ahead and open this public hearing, and what I'd like is for the folks that are, for support of the appeal, the CU-oh-three-one-three, to testify first. So, for those who are in support of this appeal, please come up, state your name and address. Yeah, that, that, you want this appeal upheld. If you want the appeal upheld, we're giving you a chance to testify first.
It's confusing. Do you want them to have a permit or not?
Yeah.
Which one?
If you don't want them to have the permit, we'll have you come up and testify first. Does that sound clear, Mr. Plaskin?
Correct.
Okay.
Um, so-
Thank you, Counselor Stevenson.
Along that vein, and before I forget, um, I have a letter, uh, of testimony, um, to, to fit this part of the hearing, I wanted to read into the record. Uh, so this is, this is not mine, this is, uh, this is from, uh, Stephen Wagner Jr., dated July twenty-second, two thousand thirteen. Um, I just got this, uh, I received this today in the office. It says, regarding appeal of Planning and Zoning Commission decision, this letter is written statement to formally request an appeal of a decision by the Lewiston Planning and Zoning Commission. This decision made by the commission includes an expansion of the zoning matrix for the BPO Elks Lodge eight-ninety-six, allowing a conditional use permit for recreational vehicle overnight occupancy at the Elks Lodge. I am a homeowner residing at three-ninety-six, three-ninety-six West Reservoir Drive in Lewiston, Idaho. My property and home are in direct line of sight of the BPO Elks Lodge number eight-ninety-six, located at three-four-four-four Country Club Drive. I oppose the decision made by the commission for several reasons, colon. One, my home is in a very nice residential neighborhood. Two, our tax bracket is significantly higher than other locations in the LC Valley, based on the location of the view of the Snake River. The homes in my neighborhood could potentially see a loss in property value and/or real estate potential based on this decision. Three, other RV parks are within a short distance of the Elks Lodge. These parks are located in appropriate areas and can support the needs of those folks wishing to park an RV in order to attend an Elks event. I am strongly against allowing the conditional use permit for the Elks Lodge, based on the above statements. Thank you for your time and consideration. Regards, Stephen Wagner Jr., three-ninety-six West Reservoir Drive.
Okay, thank you. One quick question, Mr. Plaskin. Landscaping, any landscaping that would be required of the Elks would have to comply with current city requirements?
This, not necessarily. Uh, the city's lands, the city code landscaping requirements are based on required off-street parking necessary to su, support how a building or property is used. The RV rest area under consideration tonight does not fall into that category. It's not required off-street parking. It's an option or alternative that's being proposed or requested. And so, there aren't any standards, uh, or codes that say they have to have landscaping.
Okay. 'Cause what we currently have is for parking only, not really an RV type use.
There are probably, um, other requirements that pertain to landscaping, screening, and/or shading in the RV park section of the city code. That pertains to commercial RV parks.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. For those that, uh, I guess we've had one that was against, is there any other, like to speak against the upholding this? Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Rick Acuff, and I live at three-nine-seven West Reservoir Drive, and my property is located on the corner of Country Club and Reservoir Drive, and is probably the closest to the proposed RV parking area. And I'm in favor of appealing the planning and zoning decision to allow RV hookups. I believe the decision benefits a few visiting Elk members and their guests at the expense of the established area residents, and I'm very concerned about having my river views blocked and the negative impact the decision may have on my home value. I disagree with the comment about, uh, no one deserves a view. I think we buy those lots for the view, and, uh, we didn't wanna look at RVs, we wanted to look at the river. For a little bit of background, uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission back in nineteen-ninety-six denied basically the same request, reasoning that people expect the area to remain residential, and they did not want to set a precedent and emphasized neighborhood integrity. The Elks appealed that decision, but in two thousand, the, uh, committee unanimously, unanimously upheld that decision and indicated that RV parking is not allowed in the residential area according to the Mun, uh, Lewiston Municipal Code. So, I was kinda disappointed that, and I don't understand how the Planning and Zoning Commission now can reverse those two prior decisions back in ninety-six and, and two thousand, when the situation's basically the same. The neighborhood, we also have restrictive covenants prohibiting RV parking more than seventy-two hours, so it doesn't make sense to me that I can't park an RV in my driveway for seventy-two hours, but right across the street, we can keep up to ten of them for up to seven days, I believe it is, especially when there's other more suitable locations like Hell's Gate State Park so close by. So, I'm appealing the decision reached by the Planning and Zoning Committee, and would like to see it reversed, so I can continue to live in a peaceful neighborhood, enjoy the scenic views, and protect my property values, as I have done so for twenty-seven years. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council members, my name is Randy Martin. I reside at three-eighty-five West Elks Court, and I also own three-ninety-five West Elks Court. So, I have two pieces of property directly across the street from the Elks. And, um, I guess what I'd like to start off with, I'm gonna put a picture up on Elmo just to give you an example from the other side looking at vehicles that are there in the parking lot. So, this is my home directly behind an RV, um, parked in the parking lot at the Elks. In fact, the lot that's, the empty land there is also my property, um, that is directly across the street from the Elks, and from that land, that's where I plan to build my retirement home. I already own the home behind it, uh, plan on, uh, a family member wants to buy that property from, or that house from us, and we wanna build our retirement home- from, or that house from us, and we want to build our retirement home to better suit us in our retirement years. So we love that area, and I've been a proud member of the Elks for the past 17 years, and I serve on committees as well there, but I got to tell you, I oppose an RV parking facility going in directly across the street from all of our homes. The traffic, for one thing, has been a concern. I testified to planning and zoning, said, "Look, I'm a little concerned about the kids that are out there on their bikes, their skateboards, and now I hear their scooters." We learned a little bit more about scooters this evening. But we do have kids that are in the area that are playing, and it is a residential area. It's why we bought there. In fact, a block over from the Elks, we have kids out on the street with their basketball nets set up, and they're playing basketball in the street. This is a very safe, quiet neighborhood. And we've, we've all enjoyed the events at the Elks for years, but I got to tell you, when I talk to the people at Hell's Gate Park, I'm not hearing the same thing that my Elks Lodge brothers are saying. When I talked to the Hell's Gate Park, they said, "We're not at capacity." They tell us we're also, and I did request through the Information, Freedom of Information Act, the, from the state, to find out what the actual number of people that are staying at the park. I haven't received it yet. So we went, I actually have been on the phone with them. They can only give you limited information, but I got to tell you, what they're telling me is this. One, they're not at capacity. Two, some weekends they are. And three, they have a lot of Elks members that stay there. So those state dollars, those tax dollars we're paying in to support that facility already is going to be an absolute, I mean, what are we doing? We're going to cut our throat and say, "Okay, we're going to pay, pay you in taxes to have this facility down there, and then we're going to have them stay up at the Elks Club instead?" And they're telling me we have Elks members that are staying there. Another concern that I've got is that, you know, when, when we're talking about one or two RVs, if that's it, why didn't they ask for two RV spots at the Elks instead of 10? They ask not for two, and we hear it over and over. You heard it, you heard it tonight. One, maybe two a week, that's going to be it. Not going to have them in the winter. Really? Well, I happen to play, play golf just up the hill from the Elks, and you know what? We have people from Spokane, Coeur d'Alene, Wallace, Kellogg, oh, by the way, these are all Elk lodges and those, and those facilities. I guess, you know what I'd be doing in those cold weather places? I'd be coming here not to ski, I'd be coming here to play golf, just like they do now. And I wouldn't be staying down at Hell's Gate, I'd be staying right across the street from all of our neighbors' house in a residential neighborhood. We might want to forget about steelhead fishing, we might want to forget about salmon fishing. Oh, that's not in the summer either. And I think that we've got a lot of people that would come to town, and our Elks brothers and sisters are going to come here to play, play in our nice warm valley, and they're going to want a place to park for nothing but a donation, and it's really not going to make a difference. We have, the leadership right now at the Elks are entrepreneurial, they're smart, they're bright, they know what they're doing, they've turned our club completely around. We are the biggest lodge, or second biggest lodge in this state. We have over 600 members, and these guys have done that. We don't need an RV parking area. They've already told you how good they're doing. We know how good they're doing. We were on probation. These guys turned this around without an RV parking area. That's how good they are. But they're entrepreneurs, and they're looking for ways to get out there and make even more, and I don't blame them. My problem is, you don't have to do it at the expense of the integrity of a neighborhood. I've talked to some of our neighbors, or some of my neighbors, and said, "Look, why aren't you here testifying? Tell us why." Well, one, you want to get up in front of people. Two, I'm not going to fill out a survey and cut my throat because I own a store in this town, and I'm not going to have 600 members from the Elks not coming to my store and buying product. I'm not going to stand up there and tell them they shouldn't be there when I sell vehicles, let's say, for a living, or I own a business, and I'm going to tell 674 people in our valley, "No, I don't want you doing what you're doing." So they're not here. But they'll tell us privately, "I oppose it, I don't want this to happen." But they're not going to stand up here and cut their, their throat for their business, maybe to take a hit on their property value, but not to take it in the pocketbook from the money that they make in the businesses that they run here in this community. You know, the, the seven-day stay is something that gets me. You come in, stay seven days, leave for two days, come back, stay seven more days, leave for 48 hours, come back, stay another. And we don't even have somebody working on the property. They're saying we can do this maybe by, by, I don't know, satellite, maybe by a camera, place somewhere around the area, we can look at them on a computer, and we can maintain security and what's going on in the integrity of the area, and not even have somebody there working the facility. It's going to be all volunteer or assigned to some member of the Elks organization. Not an employee, not somebody working there. I'm going to turn, I, I'm turning 60 real shortly, in fact, in a couple of weeks. My reaction time is not the same as it was when I was 40. I'd like it to be, but it's not. And when I turn 80 and I'm driving a 40-foot RV with a car in tow behind me, I doubt my, my reaction time is going to be that great. And you know what? I'm one, I'm a young'un at the Elks. I'm one of the young kids. So when these folks come here to visit, their reaction time's down, they're coming into a, an area they may have never been in before with a large RV, maybe a car in tow, and our kids are playing out there, riding their bikes, playing basketball, doing what, they take one wrong turn, and we've got kids playing on the street. And, you know, I oppose it for safety reasons as well. I also, I want, I want you to think about the slippery slope you're going down if you continue, if you do approve this. So are we going to have this at the Boys and Girls Club? Is the Lewiston Country Club now going to say they want to have a parking area for RVs up at their place? Is the Lions Club going to say, "You know what? By gosh, we want one of those, too." So are we going to go around to each one of these organizations in town that may be in a residential area, like the Country Club, like the Boys and Girls Club, like the Lions Club, and say, "You know what? We approved it for the Elks. We need to approve it for those guys, too. We need to give them at least 10 RV spots to park. And folks, we can call it a rest area all day long, an RV park's an RV park." So with that, that's all I've got to say. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Thank you.
My name is Kurt Bloom. I'm representing my mother at 3476 Elks Drive. She's 93 years old, couldn't make it tonight. Way past my bedtime. We second everything that's been said by Rick and Randy. I think this is a precedent you don't want to set. Yeah, I think it could blow up. Just for the record, we vote no for the RV park.
You don't want a written statement, do you?
If you'd like to submit it for the record, we can sure take it, Mr. Bloom. Okay, thank you.
My name is Abby Acuff, and I live at 397 West Reservoir Drive. And I was wondering where the picture was of the neighborhood, the overhead view. Do you, is it in your packet? Did you pick it up when you took it off of here? Oh, it's yours. Do you have another one of those? I just wanted to show you an overhead view of how closely and where the people opposed are located, so you have an idea.
Okay. That's the area, and this is just, this is the close-up one that I had up there.
That would be perfect. All right. My, and my husband's house is right here. And the distance between the edge of our house to the row of RV hookups is less than 200 feet. This is Steve Wagner's home, whose letter we heard from earlier. This is Eleanor Bloom's. The fellow who just testified is just a little bit further down the street. We are directly impacted by this RV park. When the state convention was in, they had a couple of RVs come and park, and they did not use the area designated for the RV park, but instead they parked along the edge of Tier 1 by Country Club Drive. One night, I went to bed with the sound of a generator droning. The next morning, I woke up to a man singing from the RV park. There are guests that come, small children, other members. It's a vacation for them. They're noisy, they're relaxing, they're having fun. It disrupts the quiet neighborhood where we live. That's why my husband and I bought the lot and built the house. It was a restricted area with covenants, so we weren't going to be living next to a dump or next to another RV park. People have to take care of their yards. It's a small neighborhood. I know everybody who walks by. I don't want to have 20 people hanging around in the neighborhood that I have no idea who they are, or bringing in family that may not, that may have problems. Every family has problems. We could be addressing someone who steals or does drugs or anything like that. It just, it de-mines the, it, it deteriorates the integrity of the neighborhood. And that's just aside from the major issues that everybody else has mentioned. I don't want to be sitting on my deck and look over and see RVs. The Elks have been very good neighbors to us for years. They have events, the parking lot's full for a night or two, and it goes. This is a continuous year-long process or availability for them to park there, and it's going to be a continuous year-long battle of people not following the rules. And I don't want that. I want you to reverse your decision and not allow the RV park to go in. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Acuff. Okay. Anyone wishing to speak for or in support?
My name is Michael Shellhorn. I live at 4014 Fairway Drive. I'm up by the Lewiston Golf Club, Golf and Country Club. I'm that 65-year-old lady that drives a 43, 10-foot-inch motorhome and/or a 40-foot fifth wheel pulled by a pickup. And I do have a CDL. As far as speed going up or down Country Club Drive, I would be far more worried about some of the young people that go flying up through that subdivision than I would somebody towing an RV or driving an RV. We just recently had somebody that missed a corner up there, flipped a car, damaged some people's car, their yard, 19 years old. Age has nothing to do with it. Traveling, I am an Elk. I travel to Alaska, I stay at Elk's RV parks. I have stayed in some that are norm, no more than just barely plowed, complete with the mud puddles and everything else. You have to be an Elk member to stay, and if you have somebody traveling with you, they are your guest, but they have to be with you, in your rig. Just because you're traveling with family and friends and they have their vehicles or their RVs, they're not the Elk member. So when we say it's for Elk members, you have to be a member and in good standing. And I am for it. There are a lot of people that do travel around. I've been to Kaiser, Oregon. It is a nice lodge. There is a resident, residential area that you go to. Palmer, Alaska, residential area that you go to to get to the lodge. It's on Finger Lake. You cannot beat the view from the Homer Lodge. It's right on Kachemac Bay, if anybody's ever been up there. And they just park RVs right in half of their parking lot, 30-amp hookup. The other thing is, there's a 72-hour that the neighbors and I, if I could get my rig in my yard, can park in our neighborhood. But while we are there, we are allowed to hook up to our water if we want to fill our tanks. We are allowed to hook up to power so that we can get our refrigerators or whatever going. Being an Elk member, it is also my dollars that have helped support the lodge, pay for a new air conditioner, pay the taxes. So in one respect, I'm not a whole lot different than a homeowner. Just a bigger family. And there's a lot of issues that have come up and everything from how long to stay. And yes, we did have people staying for the convention, and if anybody's wondering, not this past weekend, but the two weekends before, as you drove by, if there was a big fifth wheel down there hooked to a pickup, it was mine. Because I left it there on the weekends because I couldn't get into Hell's Gate State Park. We did get a site, and we had to move today because people have made reservations so far in advance that you may get a day or two here, and you may get a day or two there, and you're pretty much out of the loop. So I am in support of this. I do drive RVs. I have traveled from here to Alaska, from here to Yuma, I've been to Texas. I don't see us getting a whole lot of use, but I think any of the issues that have come up, whether it's length of stay, can be addressed. Nothing is completely written in stone. We are not out to aggravate anybody. We're willing to work. We just need to know within what perimeters, parameters, whatever they are, we can do this short of not having it at all. Because as I see it, if I can park for 72 hours in my subdivision or that subdivision, why can I not park 72 hours at the Elks and hook up to water and electric? 72 hours is three days. I mean, either way, it's almost like, you know, we can do this, but with having the rules, we have a say. No generators, no loud noises. I wish we could relate that to some of the young people, or maybe they're not even the young people that keep driving around in the neighborhoods really fast. As far as kids playing on Country Club Drive, I drive that road very frequently, sometimes more than once a day. Very, very rarely will I see a child on Country Club Drive. In the subdivision, it's a whole other story. But there are semis that go up there to deliver food not only to the Elks but to the Country Club. We have large beer trucks that go up there. You have cement mixers. You have city vehicles. So it's used, it, it's a main drag. So it's used, it's a main drag. So I am in support of it. If anybody's got any questions, as far as backing in, we're looking at maybe five sites on either side of that, every other pedestal, a back-in site. And yes, if you're in a motorhome, your main view's out your, your front window. If you're in a fifth wheel, you'd probably rather be up on Tier, Tier Two and backed in, so that you could see right out that big window they have in the back. So if there's no other questions, that's where I stand.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Shellhorn. Anyone else speaking for?
I'm Michelle Bowen. I'm currently living at 2275 Schaefer Drive in Clarkston. The first thing I have for you is nine Google Maps of various RV parking areas at some Elk lodges in Washington, Oregon, and California. However, I've been in lodges, RV parks, for probably 30 of the states. I haven't been to Alaska like her. But Kurt Lane, you can see the residential areas here. My husband and I have been RVing since 2005. I also am not the main driver, but I do drive like her. When I'm towing my pickup, I'm 66-feet long. Coming in on Country Club, first of all, is a straight route. We're probably going to average 10 to 15 miles an hour. Most of your RVers, if they're new, they might even go slower than that coming up that road, because I know where the Elks is, because I live here now. And why do I live here? Because I started coming through this valley in 2005 when my husband retired. We have a daughter in McCall, my brother and sister live in Post Falls. We discovered this valley. It's very similar from where we came at our home lodge, which was Placerville, California. Councilman Ortmann, you want to know what is in it for the Elks? Why are we doing this? From what I've seen, wherever we go, there's an average of three to five rigs at every park. You can, you can come, yes, to Hell's Gate. You can come to the Hell's Canyon Marina Park. You can come to Hillview. Hillview has a lot of long-term people there. You cannot, between May and November, on average, with a 40-hour, 40-foot rig, get in anywhere around here on a weekend without a reservation a year ahead. We have big rigs, the majority of your RVers that I've come in contact with, the rigs are 30 feet or longer, and they're new. If we run our generators, believe me, we've got big generators for those, for the, when you've got pop-outs to run an electrical. If you look at the vacancy rates, yeah, they're not sold out at Hell's Gate, but if you want hookups, odds are they're sold out. If you have a 30-foot bigger rig, they're sold out. What they're not sold out of is the tent sites, and the smaller sites are 24-footers and 28-footers. A lot of us who are retired, who are full-timing, and by full-timing, I mean traveling five months or more a year, we bring money to this area. We came through here, we buy propane, we buy gas, we buy food. You have a lovely new area that we've just redeveloped downtown. I would love to be walking down there. That wasn't there a couple of years ago. You've got the bistro down there, you've got a nice little park, you've got the new library. Elks come in, yes, we'll use the Elks facilities. I'm one of the few Elk women that actually still cook dinner. A lot of them, I mean, don't, I cook dinner, but a lot of them don't cook dinner. So they either go to the Elks, or they go to the restaurants nearby. So there is revenue that brought, that is brought in. Like, when I had friends that wanted to come in for the Dogwood Festival, I have to send them to Kurt Lane, or I have to send them up to Spokane to park. If you had some parking here, because when you have your festivals and all the other big things, it's in the brochure of what all can be done, or like he said, fishing season in the spring or in the fall, there isn't anywhere to park around here. And half the families who have RVs and fifth wheels here, they're taking up the spots locally, for their own families. Yes, you won't get a whole lot of RVers here in the winter, and I would say mainly December through March, because we don't want to come down or go up that grade pulling or driving an RV with a chance of snow. If you've ever done that, I've done it through Colorado, you don't, you're not on a flat land. I don't want to do it there. But other than that, yeah, you're going to get more use here. So there is a lot, there's revenue that will come to the Elks, there's also revenue that will come into the city. Why I moved here was coming through here, and having, but when we bought our house, for instance, last May, we could get three days in one spot at Hell's Gate, two in another, then I could get one at, over at the Hell's Canyon Marina, and this was in early May. We actually had to leave and go up and spend a lot of time at the Elks in Spokane and Kurt Lane, and then even higher up at a private park in Newport, because I could not hang around to sign my papers, because there was nowhere to stay here. And I was buying a home. So that's what we did. We went up, hung around, came back, did my papers at Wells Fargo, and then went back to California and moved, had to mover-move everything up. Odds are, once the word is in the Elks magazine, you're going to get more than one or two. On the average, like I said, across the nation where I've been, it's usually three to five. You're not going to see kids. It is always, and I have to differ with him, it is members only, and the guests are only allowed in that park if they're staying in the rig. A guest's rig is not allowed. A member can't say, "Oh, I've got Aunt Suzie and Grandma Jo." That's not true. If they're in your rig, they can, but they're not allowed to bring their rig and park. Majority of parks, I've seen maybe one exception that I've been to where they allowed guests, and they had to pay a higher rate. The trees are really a negative. I think, Councilman Cannon, you were worried about the trees. I have three pop-outs. One of mine is 18-feet long. I don't want trees between me. I have to, and I don't want to maneuver my rig in between trees that are growing and then having canopy. So if there was going to be any trees, then maybe you're going to put them near the road. But, and we really don't care that much about shade. We're traveling through, we're here to visit. We're here to use our boats and fish. We're here to hike. We're here to use the walking trails. RVers are there for their recreational opportunities. And why do we come to Elks? We want to be with other Elks. They're friendly to us. They tell us where to go. The very first people I met here, and we were at the Hell's Gate Canyon Park in 2005, was Doug and Gwen Warmel, who've been here for many generations. And they took us all around before we even bought, and showed us restaurants, showed us all what was going on, different places to go. And another couple we met also gave us a listing of things that we could do in the valley, more so than we had ever discovered on our own. So the exposure for Lewiston is also good that way, because people will come from all over the nation. This is one of the most beautiful Elks lodges, probably, I would say, in the top three in the whole nation of all the ones that I've been to. It's also one of the largest. And it's such a shame and a waste that that facility isn't being as used as much as it could be by all the national Elk members. And what also the Elks do for charity is, you have raffles, you have popcaps you save for Children's Miracle Network. There's a lot of other raffles that are, when you come here, you do things for the charities also, that there's involvement with. Let me see if there is one other point. Displaying a pass, that's common, and giving a donation is common in the parks. And so there should never be where someone doesn't have a display. And most Elk members, they're not traveling with children. We're not going to be walking down the hill. We can't do that anymore. Most, I would say, your average age that I run into is like 50 to 70, when you're traveling. Okay? So, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And we have, we are switching our membership here.
My name's Tom Neiman, and I am the Exiled Ruler at the Elks Lodge. This past, well, about two weeks ago, when, when Michael had her fifth wheel parked out there, I went out and took some pictures of her, where she parked. And, and then I kind of went around the neighborhood, too, to where some of the people who signed the appeal, and took some pictures there. And I've got some pictures I'd like to show you. This one is Michael's fifth wheel, and she's parked on the pavement area. During the convention, we did allow one rig parked up here in the, in the gravel area in Tier One. Nobody was allowed down there in the, between Tier Two and Tier Three where the hookups are. And if you notice, I'm, I'm standing on Snake River Avenue here, and right there, you can see the Snake, or the Snake River. So that's a pretty good-sized rig, and from Snake River Avenue, you can see over that and still see your view.
Country Club Drive.
Country Club Drive. Snake River Avenue is down, I'm nervous. You can tell. So, anyway, and back referencing the photo that Randy took, if you notice, it was in the paved parking lot. It wasn't out there where, where we wanted, where we want to do this. One of the main reasons we want to have this, so that these travelers can hook up to electricity. They don't have to run their generators. Thus, it's quiet in the neighborhood. In the parking lot, you know, if we don't get this, it's still a parking lot, they can park there for 72 hours. There's nothing to say they can't run the generators. We want, try and avoid that. So we're trying to help the neighborhood out there by keeping it kind of quiet. And while I was out there, before I could realize what I was doing with the, where I was going to go, I saw a little excitement out there in our, in our RV area. And this excitement come from the neighborhood. There was a little small RV, kind of like a small Jeep Cherokee. I have no idea what kind of car it was. It was a little black one. Using it for a racetrack. He was going around the edge, or the corner sideways. That's the neighborhood. It wasn't our members out there doing it. I didn't get a picture of it. I went by the dumpsters to hope they'd come back and do it again, but I think they saw me. But when they left, they went up Reservoir Drive, and I think I found where they lived. But that's beside the point. Here's a map that shows the neighborhood. I've pinpointed, just like the neighbors down here, where they live. Pat McDonough, in fact, I don't know if that's pronounced right. Steve Wagner lives there, Rick Acuff here, Eleanor Bloom here, Randy Martin here. Two other names on the, on the appeal was Jeffrey Chavez. He lives clear up here, at the corner of Country Club Drive. Look at all the houses that's blocking his view. So he can't say that, that that's going to be blocking his view of the river. I've got a picture here that shows the view in front of his house. He can't even see the river. He can, uh... This is Jeffrey Chavez's house. All he can see is Clarkson Heights, just about down here. I went up to Dr. Chavez's house. He's right up here. Here's the view of, of his river. He can't see the river. He sees Clarkston. He can't see our RVs. And Randy Martin lives right here. If I'm not mistaken, he, he claimed he could, he could see the RV area also.
Down the lot hatch with two dogs.
Okay, okay. Well, here's, here's a view of, of his house. That's not his house. This is his deck right there, and this is taken-
Your pencil is my lock.
Huh?
And where you have your pencil is my-
Right here, coming down.
Yes, it is.
Yeah. Okay. But from your deck, you can't see that RV, and-
No, I've seen people urinate in the parking lot that have the RVs there. But I, I haven't seen that one.
Okay. Anyway, from, from the RV area, most of these people who signed that petition cannot see the RV. They can't see the river, so-
My mind counts, there's two.
Ma'am, you've had, you've had a chance to testify-
Got one, two, three, four. Right there's four people that, that can see the river. And you're, and you're right there. You're correct. You're right there, and I don't have a problem with you guys. But these other people who say that it's blocking their, their view, I do have a problem with that, because they don't have a view. We allowed, last year, we allowed, well, we didn't even know who it was at first, but there was somebody in the neighborhood up there. They were remodeling their house. They brought their rig down into our parking lot, parked it, never asked permission, which was fine, but we didn't know, we didn't know if somebody just dropped it off, stolen, or whatever. It would be nice if the neighborhood would, if they do that, we wouldn't, probably wouldn't turn them down, but at least they could have common courtesy of letting us know that they'd like to park there for a few days. It turned out that gentleman was remodeling his house, and there wasn't, there wasn't a problem. He had it, you know, out of the way, but kind of courtesy. One of the comments was that, "I'm going to increase the traffic in the neighborhood." Well, when these people pull in these rigs like Michael's, do you really think they're going to come up here and drive around this neighborhood? They're going to come in this entrance right there, and come up through our parking lot. They're off Snake River Avenue. And so increasing traffic in their neighborhood, I don't think that's quite, quite correct. But once they get to that entrance, they're off, off the main road and, and out of the neighborhood, I guess. So, again, I'm the Exiled Ruler, and if you have any questions?
Mr. Neiman?
Hello. My name is Cindy Coe. I live at 1343 Hemlock Avenue in the Orchards, and I'm an Elk member. And I wasn't going to speak tonight, I was not prepared to speak, but I heard a few things that got me kind of pumped up, so I decided to speak. One of them was when the lady said that the RV was in the parking lot and not down at the hookups, was because we had not been approved, and we were not going to break any city codes or laws. And so, of course, they would have their generator going. As far as peeing in the parking lot, when you've got an RV, I don't think so. That could have been anybody.
And your 2000 testimony.
In, in 2000, someone did that? Okay, well, I've advanced to 2013, and I do know that a lot of our members that have motorhomes are older people, and they have a lot of respect. And the fact that these people don't want to look at the RVs or the motorhomes, I think one gal even mentioned that they do have a greater value than some of our homes here. I've looked at the tiers where they would be parked. They are in no way obstructing any view. They would just have to look at a $150,000 motorhome for two or three days, and that would be quite an inconvenience, I'm sure, to see these beautiful motorhomes parked in an area. I was a little offended by someone saying that they would be bringing in partying and drugs. I don't think the Elk members are known too much for doing drugs and partying down at the place. I think we have more trouble with some of our events when they're not Elk members and they try to break the rules. I know there were several other comments that were made, but I wasn't taking notes. But I just needed to let you know that I truly have checked it out. I've looked down, and it certainly should not be an inconvenience to look at these really nice motorhomes. Thank you.
Thank you. While the other speaker comes down, I'd like to caution everyone that this is where we take testimony, and we ask you to refrain from making comments or, or addressing the folks giving testimony, that they're here to talk to us. This is a quasi-judicial process, so we have to make our determination based on the, the information we have before us and the testimony we hear today and tonight. But, again, once you, we ask that everyone refrain from making comments, so that we can continue to hear the folks giving their testimony to the council. Thank you.
Council members-
Council members, I'm Greg Bengson. I live at thirty-four thirty-four Country Club Drive. I am the neighbor immediately north of the Elks Club. Initially, when this issue came around, I was nonpartisan to it. I shared no opinion either way. I felt that if there's something the neighborhood wanted, this is fine. If there's something the neighborhood didn't want, so be it. I wasn't a part of this. Planning and zoning records will indicate that neither my wife nor I have attended any meetings prior to this related to the issue of the Elks Club rest area. And the reason for this is that, again, we have not had any concerns that rose to the level of taking an oppositional stance. Therefore, we saw no need to really take part in this. It wasn't until a week and a half ago, Saturday morning, when I read in the Lewiston Morning Tribune, an article authored by Joel Mills stating that my wife and I, along with seven other homeowners, had signed an appeal of Lewiston Planning and Zoning Commission's decision to approve the conditional use permit. Furthermore, that article stated that Tribune had been unable to immediately contact the residents who signed the appeal. I'm unaware of any attempt by Mr. Mills or Lewiston Morning Tribune to contact me to verify this information, for if they had, they would have found out prior to press that their information was inaccurate. As I later contacted the Elks Club to find out more about this, the Exalted Ruler presented me with a copy of the appeal letter with my name and my wife's name placed upon it, without our signatures. This is the first time I'd seen this letter of appeal, the first knowledge that my name or my wife's name was being connected to it in any way. So, needless to say, we were a little bit surprised by this. Neither Galen nor I have given our approval to use our names in support of the appeal. That being said, I don't see the RVs as being a concern. It doesn't block my view from where my house sits. I do have some safety concerns, however, but it's not related to the necessary of the RVs. It's related to the speed limit of thirty-five miles an hour on Country Club Drive and the lack of enforcement of that speed limit, which is already too high. I've made attempts with the city in years prior to plead for a reduction of the speed limit, as I consider it to be a risk to the immediate residents, bicyclists, and pedestrians in this area, yet I'd been denied in past years. In May two thousand and ten, a member of my family was involved in a fairly serious two-car collision on Country Club Drive. She was trying to merge onto Country Club Drive from my driveway and was hit by an oncoming car before she got her rear wheels out of my driveway. And it resulted in two cars being total losses and thousands of dollars property damage. In closing, I have no opposition. I'm not here to plead for or against it. I'm here to state that my name should not be on the appeal and that, in my opinion, the speed limit on Country Club Drive is the safety issue to be considered rather than the RV traffic on Country Club Drive. I've prepared a written statement, but I'd like to leave with the council, if I might. Yes.
We have another letter that was submitted for the, wanna make sure that we get that. And then there was a letter before that. Did you? Okay, if you'd like to pass it on to me.
My name is Susan Summers. I live at thirty-six thirty-nine Country Club Court. And I'm here in support of the Planning and Zoning Commission's determination that the conditional use, as approved by P&amp;Z, be upheld. My concern is property values. I've lived at this location for about four years. And one of the big concerns we had moving up there was the condition of the Elks Club. I mean, it's a huge facility, but at that time, it was kind of going downhill, and it still isn't really booming. I mean, if you look at their membership, the last newsletter I pulled up on the internet, it looks like they gained five members, but they lost five members because the membership is aging. So, I strongly believe that anything we can do to promote that facility and make it easier for them to support their membership is a real asset to the community. I mean, just the woman that spoke previously had said the reason she moved here was because of her membership in the lodge. So, in the interest of time, so we're not all here till midnight, I'll conclude, and just, I really do support that. Oh, I did drive up around there and looked at the, downloaded the packet, looked at all the people and their addresses who opposed it, and all I could see was maybe two people could see those RVs from their house, so, you know. So, I support it. Thank you.
My name is Sue Brown. Hi, everybody. Four oh six three Park Court, Lewiston, Idaho. In looking through the packet, I too downloaded that and reviewed the planning and zoning minutes and how they approached the situation after I've been on the Planning and Zoning Commission myself. Somehow, I never got either the beginning stuff in two thousand nor the stuff now. Somehow, I was in there all in between. But some of the things that you run across is how can you mitigate when you have potential conflicts of usage? The Elks was there first, it was in the county, it got annexed in, then after that was when all the housing went in. They were there first. How do you mitigate between neighbors, a residential neighborhood, and a commercial activity? You try to bring in as many mitigating factors as you can. From what I saw, not only do the staff and the commission try to mitigate all those issues to, I think, a very satisfactory position, to where both can win. Very few people can actually see where the motor homes will be. I too have driven through there. There's a couple of houses right up where the Elks, it's Elk Drive, I think, where that comes in, and right where Reservoir Drive comes in. There's a couple of houses there that might actually be able to see, well, they will see the motor homes. As far as obstructing their view to the river, the position of the council and the commission, the Planning and Zoning Commission, for many, many, many years has been, if your view is downhill and somebody else owns property in front of you, you better buy it if you wanna protect that view. Everybody has a right to plant trees. The Elks could plant a row of poplar trees across there, right in front of Country Club Drive if they wanted to, but they haven't. They've been considerate of their neighbors, and the idea is to try to get everybody to live peacefully together. I think the staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission came up with really good conditions that they've placed. There's a limitation of ten. They cannot have any more than ten unless they come back and go through this process again. Chances of that, I think, are probably highly likely, but that would be in the future if they so desire. I'd like to support the Planning and Zoning Commission. I think they did a good job. Thank you.
My name is Chris Moore. I live at twelve oh eight Vineyard Drive in Lewiston. Some of you may recognize me as an attorney, and I am, in fact, an attorney in Lewiston. I'm not here in any official capacity. I don't represent any side here. I'm here as a member of the Elks and just presenting a personal view. When I took a look at the documents and the appeal and everything here, the first thing that I noticed was that the Elks Club is a permitted use in this R2 zone. And as a permitted use, it would be my view that the Elks Club could put the RVs in here in this area without even going through a conditional use process. As a matter of fact, the Planning and Zoning, in their final decision, or in their conclusions of law, said that the proposed use is a permitted outright use under the City of Lewiston code. So, the, based on that, the Elks Club would not have even needed to go through this conditional use process. They wanted to do that because they're trying to be good neighbors. They wanted to take a survey of the neighborhood, find out what the concerns were so that they could address them upfront. I think that's just being a really good neighbor. As far as the conditions that were imposed, because we did go through the conditional use process, certainly conditions would be appropriate. However, I had a problem with number ten, which said that the Elks can't charge their members for the use of this facility or this parking area. I think it's beyond the purview of this council, as well as Planning and Zoning, to tell the Elks what they can charge their members or not. The landscaping, number four, I think that's been addressed. The landscaping was gonna be minimal, something that blended in with the current surroundings. It wasn't intended to be an RV park with all of the amenities and facilities. It would just be very minimal landscaping. My final point here is that we're not talking about the Exxon Corporation or some big corporation coming in here and setting up an RV park. The Elks Lodge is made up of your friends and neighbors, and they are trying to mitigate any view problems. They're trying to be a good neighbor. And if there are any real concerns, I think just talking to the Elks members would resolve most of them without a problem.
Anyone else wishing to testify? Mr. Plask, can I have a couple of questions for you? If the Elks decided that they wanted to build an add-on in three or four stories, there's nothing to preclude them from doing that as long as they meet code. Is that correct? Building code?
Building code and zoning code. The applicable zoning district here has a height limit of thirty-five feet.
Thirty-five, okay.
And that's measured to the midpoint of the roof, not to the peak.
Or if they wish to expand and build more building on the property, they could do that?
They could.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, with that, I'll go ahead and close the hearing. Has the applicant got anything for rebuttal?
I just have a few points to reiterate on. One, the picture, one of the, I guess you can call the complainers, brought up, is from our north parking lot. It is a great distance from the area that we would be parking, or the tier-two and tier-three area. Again, even where that motor home was parked, you can't even see the area. The complaint about somebody peeing in our parking lot, again, was in two thousand. I think people have, and some of that was because we had no control over what was going on. Again, it's hearsay. I wasn't a member at that time. But again, having rules and regulations for members coming into park, that's the whole purpose of this permitting, so that we do have control over it. As far as having nobody at the lodge, we have a full-time secretary at the lodge, basically close to five days a week. We also, the lodge is open six days a week, sometimes seven when we have events. As far as monitoring what's going on in the parking lot, the plan is to put what they call an internet camera, looking over the parking lot area. It'll be a motion-sensitive, sensitive camera that will trigger an alarm to whoever's scheduled to monitor that area. And it will either ring their cellphone or will, and they could view it from either their cellphone or from their computer, brought to you by the modern days of technology. Big Brother can watch people now. As far as point, point one, when our neighbors bought their homes, the Elks Lodge was already constructed on the site, and they did not, you know, as far as I'm concerned, they didn't really buy a view. The view was there, and they enjoyed it for a number of years. Their view still will be there. But like I said, most of them will not see the motor homes. The ones that can will be looking over the tops of them, so they're not gonna be obstructing the view. That's if we don't plant trees. Two, we weren't, you know, the neighbors, when they bought their homes, they decided what was their covenants and what their CCNRs were. We're not part of their development. We have no clue what their CCNRs are, and we're not obliged to participate in them. Under the R2 zoning code, we're grandfathered for, as Chris Moore mentioned, into allowing us to do expansion of our business. And this is an expansion of our business. I can call out the statute. I don't think anybody really looked at it from that point of view. They just said, "It's gonna be a motor home park, and you don't want it." But as a grandfathered R2 zoning consequence, we are allowed to expand our business. There's two sections in it.
Mr. Mayor, we all have that. We have those, that-
It's under the section thirty-seven dash twenty-seven point four. Commercial use legally established on December thirty-first, two thousand and four, and which have maintained a valid business license and occupation permit. The R2 zone, the following uses of their accessory uses are permitted outright, subject to provisions and Articles Four. So, like I said, under this, we actually didn't even have to ask for a permit. We could have just used it. But again, we're trying to be good neighbors and to work with the city. We are trying to comply the best we can. Again, there's many, you know, one of the concerns the neighbors had was that, you know, they don't have any RVs in residential areas. I think I've given you enough information or books to show that there are Elk's RV facilities in residential areas. Regarding the past denials, mistakes were made on both sides. They didn't do, the Elks didn't do their homework, and the city didn't do their homework. And again, we wound up not getting what we needed to get, and again, here we are. I think we've eliminated most of those concerns. I think we've established the reasons why we wanna do what we're doing, and we did survey most of the neighbors, and most of the neighbors are for it. Or actually don't, haven't complied or responded to any of the other requests. The Hell's Gate Parking, again, people have testified that it's normally full, and if you wanna go visit people that are there, you gotta pay five dollars. If our members can't park here, they're gonna go park somewhere else, and they're gonna spend money somewhere else. And that's a fact. Our neighbors are asking us, are basically saying, neighbors are asking for a say in what we do with our property and how much we spend on it. I don't believe they have any rights to that information. We do not belong to those housing developments and do not get involved with what they do with their property. Again, we're, you know, basically a private organization, and I think some of their limitations are, or their expectations of what we need to give them is exaggerated. You know, as far as some of the complaints that are in the appeal, we've never received any complaints from the neighbors. No one called, said there was people doing whatever out in the parking lot. I've checked with other areas. No one is, the police have not had any complaints. As far as I'm concerned, it's all hearsay. When you consider the number of homes in that surrounding development, we're only seeing eight people that are arguing against the project, and some of them do not even live in the area in question. Again, it's, uh, it's, we're trying to work with the neighbors. We're not trying to stonewall them. We're not pulling, trying to just show up on their doorstep and saying, "There's gonna be ten motor homes parked down there." You know, we've done everything we can to- You know, we've done everything we can to satisfy their requirements, and we still plan on doing that. So again, I would like your consideration to uphold the decision of the last hearing, and if you have any questions, I'll be glad to try to answer them for you.
Counsel, I need this done. Thank you, Mr. Carbono.
That's it.
Okay. The public hearing has been closed. We heard from the appellant. Now, counsel, I'll entertain a motion. What's your pleasure on this issue?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if I could just remind you, because this is a land use decision, whatever motion you make, I need supporting facts or reasoning behind it, because we have to write an opinion on this. So, whatever the motion is, please give me your reasoning behind what the motion is.
Okay. Do we have to make that in our motion?
In your motion, please. Well, you can certainly do it during the discussion, as long as you indicate. Here are the reasons that I make this motion.
Or, for clarification, we could make a motion to uphold or deny the P&amp;Z decision, but then in our discussion, we need to have the finding of facts and conclusion of law in our argument to back up the motion.
That's correct. Whatever, whichever way, it doesn't, I mean, I...
As long as they make a discussion.
Oh, you make the motions up to you, but I need specific findings that you made in order for me to write the decision.
Okay. Counselor Daniel?
I move that we uphold the decision by the P&amp;Z.
It's been moved and seconded to uphold the decision of planning and zoning. Is there any discussion by counsel? Counselor Daniel?
I guess for my reason, I guess, would be, I, tonight, I didn't hear anything that would make me believe that P&amp;Z made it, had made an error or missed a fact. It sounds like they vetted this issue pretty well, and they made the appropriate decision based on the information they had, and I see no reason to change that decision.
Okay. Any other discussion by counsel? Counsel, Pro Tim Cannon?
I have a question for our city attorney. The testimony of Mr. Bengston says that he had no clue or was not informed or anything with his name being on the document to appeal. Do we have to have a certain number of people within the city of Lewiston to appeal that? Does that have to be a seven, eight, 10 people?
No. I mean, one person can appeal.
Okay.
Certainly effective there.
Just wanted to make sure.
Counselor Stevens?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a question about the fact that Counselor Kleberg isn't here, and whether or not he would want to be in on this. Is there a time certain that's important, or should we just carry on?
I think we've had the hearing, the public hearing. Unfortunately, Counselor Kleberg isn't here to hear the testimony, and I think that's important to make the determination, is to physically be here for the testimony. So, I wouldn't be in favor of delaying the decision. Counselor Dan?
I do have a procedural question. Since the decision has been made to go ahead and allow it, and we're appealing it, I guess we've taken the authority to appeal it. If we vote, when we vote on this, if it's 3-3, what happens? What's the decision?
Fails.
Well, the motion fails, but what's the result?
Then we come up with, we'd have to come up with an alternative motion.
Okay. I was gonna go, there's a default. You know, usually you're voting to approve something or not. In this case, you're voting to uphold.
Well, I was gonna say, where if it's...
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, if it's 3-3 on whatever motion you have consistently, then the decision of planning and zoning commission stands.
Would stand.
Mr. Mayor?
Pro Tim Cannon?
These are the meetings I really enjoy.
Oh, yeah, you look like you are.
I just thought I'd bring that to all your attention.
Look forward to these.
When I read the, when I read the document on Friday, and, you know, I could have went either way on this thing. The against individuals have a right to say what they had to say tonight, because they did buy their properties with that view. And oh, by the way, the pictures, Michelle, is it? That you gave us don't have a million-dollar river view in any of those pictures you gave me. None of them.
I gave you residential.
Residential, but they don't have a million-dollar river view. Okay? The Elks Club has been, has been great neighbors, and I think we all know that, and we've always used that facility. Everybody's been in that facility. It's a great place. They're trying to help out their membership. I can see that. They've got people who travel around. There's other fraternal organizations that do the same thing. I just wish that there was some way, that there could be some type of negotiations between those neighbors who are really affected by this and the Elks. You know, you've got tier-one, tier-two, tier-two and tier-three, which kind of comes down like that. Okay? Let's back them all up against tier-one, dig it down 10 feet, and maybe we won't see all those motorhomes. Some type of a compromise with those individuals. I feel for the Martins and the Acuffs and Mr. Wagner, and it is a killer view, and you're right. They didn't buy the view. They bought the lot that had the view. But still, I think I would be concerned in that way also. I think, I agree with Counselor Daniel, that I think the Planning and Zoning Commission did a great job, and they heard the testimony, and they put provisions on it, so we're not going to have big trees, and we're not going to have this kind of thing. How many motorhomes show up next year? Could be six. Could be 100. My guess, it's going to be six. I don't think it's just, I don't think it's going to be used that much. But putting the pedestals where you put them, I think back then, probably not in the smartest idea, probably not in the right spot when it comes to that, that particular piece of ground. When you started thinking about that, yes, you were here there first, absolutely, no doubt about it. You were there first, but now you have neighbors, and you have to be very cognizant of those neighbors and cognizant of their feelings and what they want to see in their neighborhood also. They love the Elks Club. Every one of them's been in. They love the Elks Club. But when it comes to the effect of things that may happen there, maybe not, but maybe. I mean, we heard when we put in a apartment complex down on 16th Avenue, Snickerd Avenue, kids are going to be killed. Okay? No kids have been killed yet. Everybody is abiding by the law. Everybody's driving the right way, and everybody's letting them through the crosswalk. So, that was a big deal. So, it's a lot of emotion in this, no doubt. A lot of emotion in this. But on the same, on the same token, I think the Elks does have the right to, to develop this piece of property for that. They could come and add on to their building right there, right? They could put a building in there for exercise or something like that, a little outlet there. That, I don't think we'd want that. I don't think we'd want that at all. So, I think they're trying to be nice neighbors, but this is not an easy decision for us to make because of the emotions involved and because of those people who did pay premium for that lot. No doubt about it. That's, they paid some big bucks for those lots. But I think if there would have been more thought involved through the Elks, through that membership, on where to place those pedestals and that kind of thing, we may not be having this conversation tonight. It'd probably be all okay. That's the only thing that concerns me a little bit. One, the gentleman told me that Elks and their membership. Then I heard another lady say it was just for the Elks, just, or Elks and...
Guess.
Guess. Excuse me, I had to get that word out. Guess. Okay? Then I hear that it's just membership, or just the Elks members. So, I'm hearing a couple of different stories there. I'm hearing times in and times out, and I'm hearing, I'm just hearing some conflict, and I hope that somewhere down the road that we can get that all straightened out, on who's to use it and who isn't to use it. I'm just hearing some conflicting things there. I can sit here right now and tell you I don't know how I'm going to vote, because I think there's some good argument on both sides. But I think if this thing passes, that I hope the Elks Club would get together with those individuals and come up with a compromise, or maybe look at this in a different light and spend some money. Yeah, you're going to spend some bucks to do it, but spend some money that maybe would be comparable to those people who are affected the most. If it doesn't pass, it's back to square one. But a lot of good testimony. This is what it's all about. Like I say, my favorite, my favorite meetings. But I'm sitting here right now, I don't know how I'm going to vote. It's difficult. It's very difficult.
Mr. Mayor, I've felt a little bit like a pinata since this discussion came out. I started getting quick comments on my, on my Facebook telling me that I won't be able to see the river, and I have been to that person's house, and you can't see the river or the Elks. My wife and I had a choice to go build in the Elks, and we were discouraged to build out there because of the unstable ground by Dr. Lavelle many years ago with college. Said that was probably one of the most foolish places to build in the city of Lewiston. Well, we've had some indication that maybe he was correct, but I also know that there are some of the most beautiful homes there, and they all have a view. I built my home. I actually took a ladder up and got a view. I wanted to see what I was going to get from my second floor. People who live in the Elks area came along and built a huge, huge airport, airplane hangar, right smack in front of my million-dollar view. I don't have my million-dollar view anymore. My ladder was not a very good $45 ladder back in those days. You can't buy the view unless you buy everything that's in front of you. I do believe that the P&amp;Z is correct in that. But when we looked at buying lots there, we didn't want to look at the top of the Elks. We wanted to use the Elks. Believe me, we did, and we have. I've looked at this from all sides in the last couple of weeks that I knew that this was coming our way. I believe that P&amp;Z has done its job. I was the one who wanted to get out of this the easy way and not accept the appeal this evening. I was the one vote that was there for consideration, because I do believe that P&amp;Z did its homework. With the R2 zone that's there, regardless of what we do here, there are some rights that the Elks have, and those we can't deny on any level. You just heard Counsel Cannon exhort the Elks to perhaps rethink its position a little bit, go back to the drawing board, and to think about how to become even better neighbors. Because people like the Martins do have, even though they may not have a direct visual line, there are other neighbors who do have a direct visual line. They have some desire to maintain that, and I think it's wise to have those conversations with all the neighbors, and I think you've been really willing to interact with the neighbors, so this is just one more opportunity to make it even a better, better adventure for all of you long-term. I don't, I didn't, I'm like Counselor Daniel. I didn't see anything here this evening that would tell me that P&amp;Z didn't overturn all of the stones that we expect that advisory. That's the most important advisory committee we have in lots of ways, and they are the ones we rely on because we aren't the kinds of experts that they are. I'm finding the appeal isn't very appealing to me, and I'm finding that Counselor Daniel's motion is one that, that makes some sense. But I would hope that in that process, there's no way for a room, to have a room full of winners tonight unless all of the parties talk to each other. That's what Counsel Cannon just got through saying. I have friends out there on both sides, or at least I hope they're friends. They may not be after tonight. They may be after me with a two before, but...
I have them for sale.
You have them for sale. So, Counsel Cannon is the only one who is going to win here in this, in this game. These are the nights that we don't like, because they really do talk to us about why government is important. We're here to try to see if we can get everybody to live happily in an environment. I see a lot of possibilities out of what was here tonight. I did not see that when I was reading my documents at home. What I saw at home was a line drawn in the sand. I didn't hear people who planned to hate each other long-term. We don't know anything about whether this move would affect people's property values. We don't know that. I feel my property value is affected because I no longer have the million-dollar view, and I'll probably feel that, but I'm not going to worry about it. My kids are going to inherit the house, and it's their, their problem. But I have to tell you right up front, this is, this is not an, not an easy decision tonight, and it's not one you like to make with neighbors and neighbors. You wish the issue were a different kind of issue. The Elks has been a struggling organization for some time in our community, and it is on a positive track, and I agree with all the people who have said that. And I'm hoping that what comes out of this tonight is that it's on such a positive track that nobody will walk out of this room and say, "We won or we lost," that everybody walks out of this room saying, "Now we have a chance to find an even better solution." That's what I'm hoping will happen, because I think Counsel Cannon gave you a little bit of a direction to go, and I think it's worth some investigation. I feel for the neighbors who are going to lose some views if this were to happen, depending on the vote. It's not fun. I can tell you it's not fun. So if there's a way to mitigate it, if there's a way to make it more pleasant, let's find it. Any other discussion by counsel?
Can you make sure we all understand the question?
Mr. Mayor, before you take a vote, let me remind you that if anybody else got any comments outside of this hearing, because you're in a quasi-judicial position on this...
That's right.
You need to disclose those now, just as Counsel Hartman just disclosed his Facebook communications.
I had two Facebook comments. They were both opposed to having RVs there. Yeah. I haven't had any ex parte communication. I agree with the comments Pro Tim Cannon said, that this is a tough decision, unlike the testimony of Sue Brown, where she missed both of them. I happened to be in on the first iteration of this, and now the second. I agree, this is a tough decision. I guess where I come to is, is, one, I agree also that planning, zoning did their homework. I think that they looked at the issues to see what they had at hand. For myself, what I wanted to see and be satisfied with is if the Elks did meet the requirements of the uses of R2 residential zone, and as far as I'm concerned, they've met Section 37-27, Paragraph 4. Also, I guess I have a concern that if you're in compliance with that zone, then what you do with your property is, is your business. But, and it's where the Elks was there first, I guess we had the same issue with our airport. The airport was there before a lot of those houses was built there, and the perimeter fences were up, and they just didn't happen to have hangers built in front of your place that was built that come later.
You're telling me to build a higher house, that's all.
Yeah, or approach patterns. We, as time goes on, aircraft changes, engine noises change, but you've still got the same way in and out, because wind direction doesn't change a whole lot once you get an airport established. And so, it's how do you balance that existing, pre-existing use with, with development as a community grows? And so I think that that's an important consideration that I think planning and zoning has, has taken into consideration. The grandfathered use, when the facility was annexed into the city limits, I think...
has considerable bearing with my decision, uh, because they were pre-existing use there. They're not changing their business at all. I, I think from the testimony I've heard that they're just extending a service to members only. And if I understand things right, that the member has to own the RV or be in the RV and just the guests are there. It's no different than if I, where I'm not an Elks member and I show up, I need to be escorted in the facility by a guest unless I'm there for one of the wedding or whatever else someone may be renting the facility for. The comment was made that, um, the current leadership of the Elks has done a good job in turning the Elks around. And, uh, I think that, uh, I think that speaks volumes cause we've all been here when that slide occurred and we seen what would happen to the Elks in the subsequent, subsequent years. Uh, I completely agree with the statements that, uh, regards with the vote goes to, to night, that, uh, I urge the, the Elks and their neighbors, Elks, continue the discussion and dialogue with their neighbors and try to mitigate what you can to the best of your ability. Some of the, the questions that were asked about landscaping plans and that, I can, I can completely understand why you don't fully develop those right now because of the cost that you wanna know if that, you, you have the outright use of the land, but because, you're basically a commercial building that's surrounded by R2 residential, that you, you have some additional requirements you have to do if you do change operations or do things. And so, uh, and I think you're prudent stewards in trying to hold back, spending a lot of money until you know that you can, can do that. But if you do get approval, um, I do strongly urge you, hear council's concerns and continue that dialogue with your neighbors to make sure you mitigate those questions. I think that, uh, and then the landscaping needs where we don't have any landscaping requirements, I think that that's, that gives some latitude, uh, that, that should be part of that dialogue to make sure it's compatible if you do go forward with this. With that, uh...
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Daniel.
I do have one disclosure. When I got here, um, when I came into the meeting, I did have one individual make a comment that they were opposed to the appeal.
Okay. That's normal. Okay. With that, any other further discussion? Hearing none?
Okay. Could we make sure the motion?
The motion?
So all of us understand?
The motion is to uphold the planning and zoning's decision to allow the use.
Okay.
And deny the appeal.
Point of, point of information, Mr. Mayor? Do you have what you need for findings of fact?
Yes, thank you.
Do you wanna share with us some things you've heard?
Well, as I understand it, you've taken the, the findings that the Planning and Zoning Commission made and determined that those are sufficient to support the, the decision that, uh, to uphold the appeal if that's where you're gonna vote. Um, and Mayor expressed that he had, um, the fact that it was a grandfathered or permitted use made, um, some impact on his decision as well. So I can use that, if you're relying on the findings of Planning and Zoning Commission, I can certainly use those.
I can definitely sympathize with folks about view. I built a large deck off the back of my house and, uh, if it wasn't for my neighbors', three forty-foot tall pine trees, I could actually probably see the Clearwater River in the Port of Lewiston. But, uh, uh, the trees were definitely there before my deck was, so we'll, we'll have to see what goes, but...
With that, any further discussion? The council understands the motion before us. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion carries six zero to uphold planning and zoning's decision. Thank you everyone for coming. Can we take five minutes? We'll adjourn for a five-minute break.
Stuck to your seat?
Yes.
Okay, welcome. We'll reconvene the Lewiston City Council regular meeting. Next item of business is consent agenda. Items D, E, and F have been pulled and put to the active agenda. So, item D will become item E on active. Item E will be item C on the active. And consent agenda F will become item D on the active. So with that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, read the consent agenda as amended.
So moved, Mr. Mayor?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. To read the consent agenda as amended, is there any discussion by council? Counselor Stevenson?
Yes, I do have a quick statement or I'd just like to mention. As far as the surplus item, we talked about this before and we didn't do anything about it. But I was looking at the list and I think it's a shame that we have to be sending this stuff to some remote surplus item when there's a lot of equipment or whatever that we surplus that I think our people in town can use. So, I would like to see us bring that topic up. I don't want to do that tonight. But I just wanted to comment, Counselor Daniel brought it up before and we didn't do anything about it. And I'm not saying that we not have bidding or anything like that. But we've had them before in lots and you went in and you looked at stuff and you bid and it was auctioned. But it was local. It was, you went over and you got to touch it and feel it and that stuff. Anyway, just an opinion. I'd like to see us talk about that in the future.
Okay. Counselor Daniel?
I'd like to echo those comments. I don't have anything else to add.
Okay. Any further discussion on the consent agenda? Hearing none, those in favor of reading the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six to zero.
Approving the meeting minutes of the June 24, 2013 budget work session and the July 1, 2013 work session. Approving the bid award for the ADA Ramp Project, A and R Construction of Lewiston, Idaho in the amount of $259,165.77. Approving Resolution 2013-36 by title only. A resolution declaring various items of municipal property to be surplus and providing an effective date. And approving the vouchers payable dated June 22, 2013 through July 3, 2013 in the amount of $1,242,218.21. And this excludes payments to Han Rental and Han Supply.
Okay, council. The consent agenda has been read. I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as read. Is there any discussion by council? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six to zero. Moving on to the active agenda, the first item is ordinance 4597. Potential first reading. I'll entertain a motion to read ordinance 4597 for the first time.
So moved, Mr. Mayor?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to read ordinance 4597 for the first time. Is there any discussion by council? Counselor Daniel?
I just have a question on the new, on the added language. If our city attorney could kind of describe to us, what is fiscal responsibility as is mentioned in here? What could that entail?
Certainly. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, it's precisely what brings that language to you. We have a cemetery fund and we have a perpetual cemetery fund that's a trust account. So we've got two separate funds. One is a fiduciary fund that we take people's money in trust for maintenance of parts of the cemetery or cemetery plots. And then we have an operational fund. We have to transfer every year money from one fund to the other. And the initiative ordinance as it's written now will not allow us to do that. And so that's the reason that this comes before you. Now, there may be occasions where it's either required by law, which I think in this case also applies because there's the cemetery statutes that exist. But you can't combine a fiduciary fund and an operational fund because we hold this money in trust for people. So that's what occasions the language that you have.
Yes, ma'am. Counselor Randall?
Can the operating fund charge the perpetual fund for servicers rendered?
I don't, I'm not sure I know the answer to that question.
It would not be a transfer.
I don't know. It would change the.
Charge.
I don't think it would change the fact that we have to transfer from one fund to another, which is what the initiative prohibited. Whether it's a charge or whether or not we transfer because it's, we have to make a transfer in order to carry out the wishes of the fiduciary fund and to operate the cemetery. I don't know if it would change that technically.
Counselor Daniel?
So, other than the cemetery issue, is there any other time where that could be utilized? I guess I want to make sure we're in keeping with the voters' pass.
Not that we're aware of now, and it still requires a majority vote of the council to do that. Although, let me indicate to you that if you don't vote in the majority to allow a transfer of the cemetery fund, then we've got some serious problems. But I'm not aware of any other right now, but we're just trying to fulfill our fiduciary responsibilities to the people that have put their money in trust with the city.
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Daniel? Randall?
So, what you're saying is Idaho state law requires us to be able to transfer the funds for those two particular funds. So why do we have to have, or if required by a fiscal responsibility of the city, we don't even need that. All we have to do is leave it as required by law, period.
Yeah. Counselor Randall, I just wanted to make sure I covered all of the bases.
Okay. Reason I ask on that is because that fiscal responsibility, that's pretty loose. That's really loose. It could be interpreted in a lot of ways.
Actually, there are very strict interpretations and definition of what a fiscal responsibility is in the law. So, it's not a big wide highway. It's a very narrow highway.
Counselor Stevenson?
I don't agree with that wording. I think it's way too loose. And if it is a specific fund that we're concerned about, then we should name it. Because the intent of the initiative was to avoid any transferring of money around and this kind of gives it back to the permission to be able to do that. So I don't, I think that if we, if it's for two specific things, then let's name them.
Counselor Daniel?
I would probably agree with Counselor Stevenson. I guess, I came in here with a lot of reservations on this, but what you just said makes a lot of sense. And so I guess I'm a little torn on it now as far as fiscal responsibility. I didn't know what the legal definition of that was and apparently it's not as broad as what I was, you know, the political world is, when somebody says fiscal responsibility, I can mean a lot of different things. I guess I'm kind of torn on it. Can I ask why this came before us? I don't remember this coming up in a work session or if it did, it may have been just mentioned.
It did come up in a work session, Counselor. And Mr. Mayor, members of the council, what happened is that I think we just decided we would wait until it got close to budget season. We're in the position now where we have to transfer money from the perpetual fund to the operational fund. So, something has to be done within the next month or so.
Okay. Any other discussion by council? Counselor Stevenson?
Who made the motion? Was it Counselor Daniel?
Yes.
You don't have a motion.
Or to read.
Oh, we're just in the discussion.
Yeah, the motion to read. We have a motion to read.
All right, then, Ms. Mayor?
Yes.
Is it appropriate? I would like to, do we have to read? I would like to amend it to, amend those words. Then we need to wait until after you read it to do it. You have to read it in order to get it before you to act on.
All right.
Well, this is just the first reading, so.
Right. You can propose amendments anytime you want between now and the third reading.
But if we read it right now, we won't get it, we can't amend it tonight. We have to wait until the, we have to wait till the third and final, isn't it?
You can vote to read it and you can, and suggest, or you have a motion to amend it and then the next time it comes back before you, if you vote in favor of the amendment, then it'll come back before you as the amended ordinance.
So we can do, for process, then we could vote to read this, but then also have a vote to amend this to the wording that we'd like for the next time, for the second reading.
Exactly what we just did on the skateboard ordinance. Came back with an amendment.
Okay. That makes sense?
Yeah.
Counselor Daniel?
Before I support, I mean, I realize it's only the first reading. But our city attorney is saying does make sense. I guess, how does the rest of the council feel about the proposal to afterwards amend this? Because if we, if I go ahead and vote for this out of the sake of good faith and then it's a three-three vote on amending it, then I might as well have just voted no.
I don't have any, Mr. Mayor, I don't have any problem with the wording here because I understand that fiscal responsibility of the city, that's pretty well defined in law. There are things cities absolutely must do and this is one of them. Taking care of the fine line between these two, not something that doesn't even have any consideration with our initiative at this point. That's not what we're talking about at all.
I think that Counselor Daniel, for me, the, these are both funds that affect the cemetery. One's perpetual care, the other's operational funds. And in the past, we've been able to utilize those, but with adopting an initiative that we want to just make sure that we're not into counter purposes to our ordinances we've adopted currently. So, I think this language does that and still allows us to comply. However, I wouldn't have a problem supporting wording of an amendment that if you wanted, you felt it was more appropriate to specify these accounts as we identify them than put them on here. It just means that you may have a, down the road, be cluttering up this prohibition section with a lot of exceptions. And, you know, I guess we just need to have, which way are you comfortable with? Counselor Stevenson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't, the attorney is telling us that we aren't going to be having a lot, that it's these two specific ones and that, so we're not anticipating. Fiscal, another day, it could be argued, well, it's a fiscal necessity unless we've named the specific ones. And anything could be suddenly a fiscal necessity. I think it's just a little too vague and while it may have a specific definition and meaning, it's pretty broad. Whereas if we specify the ones that were obligated, in other words, naming them, then we're not trying to skirt the initiative.
Counselor Randall?
I'm uncomfortable with the fiscal responsibility part and I'm also uncomfortable with specific names of specific funds. However, I don't have a problem with required by law. Because we know the two specific funds we're talking about, according to city attorney, that's required by law. And anything else that comes up that's required by law, that's what we're going to have to work with. The fiscal responsibility, I agree with the counsel here, is that it seems to me very vague. And I'm sorry, even though the city attorney says that it's got some narrow definitions, a few years down the road, that could be wormed into who knows what. And I'm sorry, I'm not going to be comfortable with that at all for any reason. And so, if we can amend this later on after we've done our discussion, I'd be looking at that.
Okay. Counselor Daniel?
I'm sorry to ask so many questions. I guess if it's already state law, isn't it already part of this, of our local law? I mean, since state law trumps.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Daniel, when the initiative was enacted, it was my opinion that state law allowed us to do what the initiative tells us we can. I think state law allows us to do, to transfer funds. The initiative has been enacted into law specifically for the city of Lewiston. So it wouldn't matter if state law allowed it because state law allows us to do it now. But our initial, our local ordinance does not. So, in order to make this transfer, we have to have a provision in this ordinance that allows us to do that.
But I guess my, I guess my point on that is there's difference between being allowed to and you're saying it's required by law. And I guess if it's required by state law, then that, doesn't that override the initiative in terms of?
What's required by state law in this instance is our fiscal responsibility to the trust account. So, I think, yeah, I guess the reason that I put both of them in there, required by state law and fiscal responsibility, so it'd be really clear what we're doing. This is a fiscal responsibility of the city to hold that money into trust and to manage that money as a trust. In order for us to use the money, we still have to transfer it into another fund. It just is a much cleaner and, I guess, for our purposes, clearer way to do it, to make sure that our own ordinance says that we're going to allow you to do that. There's no doubt we have a fiscal responsibility to hold this money into trust and to manage it. But it's there for the specific purpose of transferring it to an operational fund of the cemetery.
Counselor Daniel?
With this language, could a majority of the council without declaring emergency state that something is the fiscal responsibility of the city to do?
Yes. Still takes a majority vote in the city council.
Everything takes a majority vote in the city council, though. I guess the point of the initiative is we have to declare it an emergency, which is a pretty public statement to the public saying, hey, yes, we're not supposed to transfer, but this is an emergency. We all agree, or the majority of us agree that it's an emergency. Otherwise, the initiative is moot if all we have to say is, well, it's our fiscal responsibility to do this. Because anything the city does, hopefully, is a fiscal responsibility. I guess that's my concern is.
I think it's in, what we're trying to do here, Counselor Daniel, is to, one, comply with the terms of the initiative, but two, not coming up, have to come up right now with the existing, the way our current ordinance is. For us to transfer each time, we'd have to declare emergency and authorize transfers of those funds once a year or twice a year, whatever it needed to keep the operational fund funded by the perpetual care. And so, where it's a normal part of the operations and the funds are all going to the cemetery, I guess we're, staff is looking for, they thought this was a direction that would handle that. But if there's, I'd say that it'd be incumbent on us to come up with some amendment language that you're comfortable with for the second reading and get it before council so we can sure look at that if we think we need to be more specific or, you know, drop the words where it's just required by law. But I think it's one of those things that we're doing our best to comply with what the initiative language is and want to, but it's making sure that we're not crossways to our own laws, too. Counselor Daniel?
No, and I was, I was actually, you know, leaning in support of go ahead and reading it. But I guess the, my previous question raised several alarms. I mean, if all we have to do is say this, this item here that we want to do is a fiscal responsibility and just a majority of us to vote for it, then I guess, in my opinion, that kind of makes the initiative just a statement. It doesn't actually restrain the city at all. I guess that's my concern. And I don't feel comfortable voting for this for the first reading. Now, I would be comfortable maybe if it came back before us with different language so we could appropriately fund the cemetery.
I guess that's where we need language from you that you're comfortable with. I don't think staff can read your mind or your intent and I think you could use staff to voice your concerns and come up with some language for alternative amendment. But to, I don't think it's responsible to say you don't agree with this and want something else when you don't really have anything specific to supplement that with. Counselor Orton?
I look at it slightly differently from the standpoint of, I don't think anybody involved in the initiative had the intent to say that we would not honor our responsibility for the trust accounts. I know that when I purchased my plot and paid that money, that I paid that money for a trust account and I would expect that to be honored. And I don't, I don't think that anybody who is involved in the initiative even so much has considered that as one of their primary concerns in transferring the funds. This is a mechanism that makes it possible. It defines it. It narrows it by law. I'm very comfortable with this. I think that we absolutely have a responsibility, a fiscal responsibility, to all of the people who have purchased property in Normal Hill Cemetery and we can't abdicate that.
Counselor Daniel?
And I agree with you, just like I repeatedly say, you know, I want to figure out a way to do this so we could fund those trusts and the cemetery.
I think this does it, but.
But it also expands it. Because that, the whole part of the fiscal responsibility, just like we, I just brought up, is, you know, we could, we could say anything is the fiscal responsibility of us to do.
But Counselor Daniel, that's actually in the initiative. There's actually a clause for emergency in there and that's not in conflict with what's here.
No, I understand that.
So it's taken care of in the initiative by itself and there isn't anything we need to do in this particular discussion of this fund to worry about that.
Counselor Orton, I think Counselor Daniel has the floor.
Thank you. I guess my problem is, is I believe it goes too far. If you wanted, my suggestion, I guess, is I would drop the, after required by law, I'd drop the "or if required by," or if, the whole sentence about fiscal responsibility of the city. Because if it's required by law, and then if we want to add the addition to it to specify the cemetery, I would, I would go for that. And if there's any other ideas as far as how we could clean it up with trusts, or, I don't know. But that's my suggestion starting out.
Mr. Mayor? Counselor Randall?
Seems the two things we're sort of stuck on is, well mainly is that fiscal responsibility. And I don't see why we could work out a wording where we could put the transfer of funds, if required, for the fiscal responsibility by law or something of that nature. And that would include all ours. But it would, at the same time, we'd be saying it had to be required by law. That isn't something we'd vote on. It'd be something that's mandated.
I guess I'd put this out. Would the state statute that outlines what fiscal responsibilities a city are, is that something that's a page or two of dialogue that we could understand as layman? Ms. Shropshire, or that you could?
Well, I could, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I could probably get you something that shows what fiscal responsibility is as it relates to a trust account. And that's the city's responsibility in this case. And I'm certainly, whatever the council wishes to put in his language, I'm happy to try and meet whatever language you want to put in there. It's just that there is a requirement that we treat this as a trust account. As Counselor Orton said, there are people with money in that account who anticipate that we're going to continue to hold that money in trust.
You just made a statement that might work. Could you, is it on records and you can pull it up again? What did you just say?
I'm happy to come back with language that tries to get whatever the council decides. If you just give me a decision about what you wanted to say, I'm happy to do that.
Counselor Stevenson?
This is definitely too open. It needs to be more specific to what you're aiming at. In other words, it's those trusts, specifically the cemetery and the, what's the other one?
Operation Fund. Your cemetery, perpetual care.
The perpetual care, yeah, yeah.
Then your operation. Your perpetual care is actually the trust that we're talking about.
Let's see, so we have a motion and a second to read. And if that dies, then this could go back for, you know, if the motion to read dies, then it can go back for amended language.
Well, you'd have to vote to bring it back up. My suggestion, if you want to amend what's there, is vote to read this, but then follow up with a motion to amend and let's try to get as specific as we can with a consensus of.
That's what I prefer to do. Then we don't have to change ordinance numbers or any of that kind of stuff. We just vote to read it and then give me the language that you want it to have and we can amend it.
Because we just did that with the skateboard ordinance so that we don't have to go back through and put it in for those reasons. Counselor Daniel?
So, for the sake of the cemetery fund, are my fellow counselors willing to amend it so it's more specific? I'm not going to get trapped into voting for, to read it and then all of a sudden it, three to three and it fails.
I think you're asking something that you're not entitled to get, which is what their vote's going to be.
I can ask my fellow counselors whatever I want. They don't have to answer me, but I can ask them what they're, if they're open to it.
I'm open to consider what the amendment would say, I guess.
But we, Mr. Mayor, but we have to get through the reading first, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so whether you agree with how it's written or not?
The only way we're going to take the next step to amend is if we get this thing read before midnight and move on with the.
This is the fun part.
If we move on, if we move on with the amendment so our city attorney can put it into language to bring it to the second reading. We can haggle this thing all night long, but we have to read this so we can make the amendment. I don't care if you agree with it or not.
Counselor Randall?
Let's read it.
I'd like to call a question. Question's been called.
Jeez.
Those in favor for calling a question, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries five to one. So, those in favor of reading ordinance 4597 for the first time, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries four to two.
Approving the first reading of ordinance 4597 by title only. An ordinance of the city of Lewiston amending ordinance 4591 codified as Lewiston City Code 2-79.4. 2-79.4 regarding the usage and levying of fees permitting the transfer of funds if required by law or if required by a fiscal responsibility of the city and providing an effective date.
Okay, next item of business is, unless somebody has a motion to amend, do we have anything?
Direction here?
Counselor Randall.
I have a motion to amend. I would like to drop or if required by a fiscal responsibility of the city.
Is that a motion?
Yes.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to, proposed amendment to section 2-79.4 to drop or if required by a fiscal responsibility of the city. So it just will read or if required by law, period.
Yes.
Okay, any discussion on the amendment?
Mr. Mayor?
Jamie Shropshire?
Yes, sir.
Your legal opinion on that? By dropping that, what does it do? What does it, what does it do for, for this?
I think fiscal responsibility is, is required by law in the city, so we are legally required to maintain a trust account and legally required to transfer those monies for what they're intended to do, whether or not that's a statute or case law, it's a legal requirement of the city. So, I mean, I'm fine with that if you want to drop that. I don't have a problem with that being a legal interpretation.
And we'd still, Ms. Shropshire, then we'd still be in compliance with our ordinance?
Absolutely, because it still requires a majority vote of the council to actually make the transfer.
Okay.
Even in an emergency, it requires a majority vote of the council, so to declare the emergency. So you're still in compliance with your ordinance, you know, you still have to vote to transfer the money.
So what does this phrase do to help clarify things for you legally?
I think it, instead of simply requiring always that there be an emergency declared, I mean, I think it's borderline that this is an emergency. At some point, it might become one, but it certainly is clear if we simply say, if we're required by law to do this, so we're going to transfer the money, than to ask the council to make a determination that this is somehow an emergency every time we have to transfer money, which I don't, which I think is, is not something you want to get involved in. But that would be the alternative, because you don't have any other codes, any other provisions in this ordinance that would allow you to make those transfers.
Okay. Counselor Stevenson.
I agree with the proposed amendment, it actually simplifies it. It permits the transfer of funds if required by law, period. We don't, the last part is superfluous and vague, superfluous. So I think it's actually an improvement. Thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries four to two. Next item of business is vouchers payable, Han Rental, Han Supply, from 6/22/13 through 7/313 for $1,035.23. I'll entertain a motion to approve vouchers payable to Han Rental, Han Supply.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve vouchers payable to Han Rental, Han Supply for $1,035.23. Is there any discussion by council? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six, zero.
I assume now, Mr. Mayor, with Mr. Kleberg's new employment, that we won't have to do that anymore?
Yes.
Yes, I understand, if that's correct.
Okay.
I guess we would need Mr. Mayor, members of the council, to make sure there are no invoices that were generated during his employment, but once we do that, we'll be fine.
Okay. Next item of business is possible reading and approval of a resolution 2013-19.
No.
Forty-five ninety-six.
Forty-five ninety-six.
Forty-five ninety-six, sorry about that.
No, no.
No, for item D, or I moved items E to item C, so I'm working off of my active agenda.
All sorts of messed up.
E and C.
See, C and D got...
E and F got pulled first, and then we pulled D at the end. That's why it's out of...
Oh, gotcha.
So, anyway, so possible reading and adoption of resolution 2013-19. I'll entertain a motion to read resolution 2013-19.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to read resolution 2013-19. Is there any discussion by council?
Counselor Daniel.
I'll go ahead and vote to read it, but I will be making an amendment to it after.
Okay.
Or trying.
Second.
So any, any further discussion on reading of resolution 2013-19? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Motion carries five to one.
Approving resolution 2013-19 by title only. A resolution amending the reimbursement agreement between the city of Lewiston and Idaho Municipal Corporation and Canyon Crest Estates LLC and Idaho Limited Liability Corporation, authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest respectively said agreement and providing an effective date.
I'll entertain a motion to adopt resolution 2013.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt resolution 2013-19.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution 2013-19. Is there any discussion by council?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Randall.
My understanding of this resolution is, is what we're doing is tagging on another five years for the amount of time that they can pay this off. We already, they still have 20 years to go on this.
No, no, I want to clarify that. This is, this is a reimbursement agreement that applies to lands outside of Canyon Crest Estates that might wish to purchase some of the capacity in the sewer line that serves that subdivision. The reimbursement agreement allowed the owner of the subdivision Canyon Crest to collect from those individuals a certain amount for a period of 20 years to pay for the costs of installing that line. What this proposal would do would be simply to extend that time period to 30-year time window during which funds could be collected from potential lands that would annex into the city and want to buy into the capacity of that line. It doesn't affect the city's ability under the agreement, because all the other terms remain the same, to collect its investment in that line, which amounts to around $125,000 to set a fee to collect that over time from new development in the area to help reimburse the city for its cost. But that's basically what the resolution does.
Counselor Daniel.
Probably going to fumble with this question. So if we didn't approve this, and their, the original time ran out, would we be, would the city be getting any more money? Nope. Or, I guess, so, does people, wouldn't these, having to pay into it?
Correct.
Okay.
So my, my understanding, this basically protects our interest for another 10 years for any development around that area that wants to tie into that major sewer trunk.
Right, and, because we, just as the, the owner of the subdivision doesn't know how long it might take for new development to want to come into the city and to use part of that line, the city doesn't know that either, so the amount of time it would take us to recover our investment kind of goes hand in hand with that. We don't know how long it might take before we would eventually recover the full investment that we've made in the line as well.
Any further discussion by council?
I'm working on a question.
Okay.
So there's absolutely no budgetary impact?
None.
Either short term or long term?
No.
Okay.
Just extends our ability to...
Collect.
Collect.
Right.
Any further discussion on reading resolution, or approving resolution 2013-19? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign.
Nay.
Motion carries four to two. Next item of business is reading of resolution 2013-37. Possible reading and adoption of amending the planned unit development agreement between the city and Canyon Crest Estates. I'll entertain a motion to read resolution 2013-7.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we read resolution 2013-37.
Second.
It's been a motion to read resolution 2013-37. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
I see, I was trying to get your attention.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, is there any discussion, Counselor Daniel?
I have a lot, couldn't, is it appropriate to, to have the city manager explain this one?
Yes.
Before we even...
If you have some questions, I would...
Can you kind of just go over this a little bit?
Absolutely.
I got lost in a little bit of language as far as the $90,000, is that money we're out?
We discussed, this was, you know, initial discussion that we had at our work session previously. Currently, there is a, a PUD agreement governing the entire development of the Canyon Crest subdivision. One of the elements of that agreement deals with how sidewalks would be provided within the subdivision. Initially, the agreement made a trade-off, let's put it that way. It basically said, we'll allow you to put sidewalks on only one side of all the streets throughout the entire subdivision as it's developed, in opposition to our standard, which is curb, gutter, and sidewalk on both sides of the street. And if you do that, in return, you will pay to the city a fee in lieu of sidewalk for each house that is developed within the subdivision. And in addition to that, by a date certain, which I believe is June of 2014, you will make a lump sum payment to the city of $90,000. And that will cover the rest of the development of all those phases, because, you know, we don't know when that will actually occur, so the benefit to the city was to get the money upfront that could be used for sidewalk projects in other parts of the city. What this agreement would do would be to go back to the standard way of providing subdivisions within the city of Lewiston, which is, it would require all future phases of Canyon Crest to provide curb, gutter, and sidewalk on both sides of the street. It would not affect the current phase, because each of those homes have paid the fee in lieu of sidewalk, so the city has been made whole by those fee in lieu of payments. And so that first phase would remain with the single curb, gutter, and sidewalk on one side of the street only, but all future phases, which is the vast bulk of the subdivision, would revert to the normal requirement for streets in city subdivisions. And what's the reason for doing this? Well, obviously, it's, for the developer, it eliminates the balloon payment that was due next year, and for the city, the trade-off is that we get curb, gutter, and sidewalk on both sides of the streets. In the long run, the city benefits from that far more than from the $90,000 we would have gotten, or we would get next year to use for sidewalk projects, because there's so much more, many more lots to be developed eventually in that subdivision. So that was, that's the idea here behind this particular resolution. Again, it's, there's no additional cost to the city, you know, if you were to, you know, figure it out in detail based on the number of lots that might be developed down the road, the amount that we would gain far exceeds the $90,000. But again, that's going to be down the road somewhere when all those lots finally get developed and all those curbs, gutters, and sidewalks get built, so...
I guess that's where I get lost in it, is the $90,000, that has nothing to do with the first phase.
No.
Zero.
No.
But it was part of the agreement as, as a whole with all the phases, the $90,000.
Correct, right.
So it wasn't $120,000, this is just the remainder, it was just $90,000.
Right, it was whatever was not developed as a, that date certain, June of 2014, any lots developed after that point would then be subject to, you know, be, that $90,000 would cover the rest of those lots and the rest of that development within Canyon Crest. All the lots have now been sold within the first phase of Canyon Crest, so there, they haven't all been developed, but they're in the process, that's in the process of happening. They will all pay the fee in lieu of sidewalk, so that will close out that part of the subdivision. And so the rest of the phases, as they go down the road, however many there are, will all be subject to the city's standard subdivision sidewalk regulation, which is curb, gutter, sidewalk on both sides of the street.
So, why in phase one? Because currently, this agreement is standing. Why in phase one were, did the people have to pay the in lieu of fee if that $90,000 was supposed to cover it, I guess?
No, but it wasn't. That, that, remember, it had both provisions in there. One was that each lot that was developed, because we didn't know how many lots would actually get developed by June of 2014, each one of those lots had to pay the fee in lieu of sidewalk fee, and then wherever we were at that point in June of 2014, we would receive a lump sum payment of $90,000. And then the rest of those lots would not have to pay the fee in lieu of sidewalk fee, because we'd already have received the $90,000.
So, the, if I understand things right, Mr. Bennett, that Canyon Crest was planned out with at least three phases of development.
And it could be more depending on...
It could be more depending on how they...
Yeah.
The only part that they had developed was phase one, and that part, even though everything else had been plotted, which is mainly lines on paper, with the water and sidewalk on one side and curb and gutter on both sides of the street, was all established and designed for phase one with the in lieu of program, and all those lots have paid the in lieu of fee, or will be, in part of the land transaction.
Yeah, that's right.
And so we're approaching where phase one is going to be billed out here in the near future.
Pretty quick, yeah, this year, I'm guessing.
Billed out, sold.
Or sold.
Mm-hmm.
So lots are sold. So what this is, is $90,000 for in lieu of, anticipated in lieu of upfront for phase two and three, but if we don't do this, what we're getting is curb, gutter, and sidewalk on phase two and three on both sides of the street, which is our preferable option.
That's our preferable option. In fact, you know, at the beginning, that's what we normally would have required, but because, you know, if you only have to put in half of the curb, gutter, and sidewalk, you save a lot of money upfront in the initial development of the, of the development, and that, I'm sure, was the thinking at the time. Well, we'll save that money upfront, because, you know, it's costing a lot of money initially to build all the infrastructure for the subdivision, and then down the road, you know, when we've sold a lot, enough lots, and again, remember, this was based on the expectation that the market was going to continue with lots to be sold at the rate that they were at that time, when the, when, you know, the market was still doing really well, so...
So, all things being equal, if they didn't have sidewalks on just one side of the street, we wouldn't have had an in lieu of project on any of it if they had curb and gutter on both sides for all three phases.
We wouldn't have had that, we wouldn't have collected those funds, yeah.
Counselor Daniel.
So, I'll, I'll probably end up getting beat up for this, but as I understand it, this doesn't sound like it's any sort of bailout or anything else like that, it's more of a, I guess, a renegotiation of what we want done as far as curb, gutter, and sidewalk. It doesn't sound like we're out anything. I, I guess I'll end up supporting this, but I really hope I have the story straight. I, I spent a lot of time going over this, and I, you've answered a lot of my questions, so I'll, I'll support it. It, it doesn't sound like it's any kind of bailout or anything. I hope it's not, I hope I understand it correctly.
Protein cannon.
It's not, Counselor.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely, I totally agree with you. It's not a bailout, and I, I got to tell you something, when they did this in the, in the development east of the old Walmart store... store, my parents bought a condo there. My parents, their condo didn't have curb, gutter, or didn't have sidewalk on their side of the street. Now, you can go talk to my mom and how many times she kissed the pavement because she stubbed her toe because she wasn't walking on the sidewalk. This is a win for us. We want curb, gutters, and sidewalks on both sides of the street.
We really do.
I don't, I do not wanna take another elderly person to the hospital to have their face rebuilt because they don't want to cross the street to get on a sidewalk. This is a great win for us. This is, this is absolutely perfect. So I'm, I'm totally in favor of this.
And I'm, and I'm in agreement with you, Counselor Daniel, that I'm in support of this because I'm not, I'm not a supporter of sidewalks on one side of the street and in lieu of program. I think that you need sidewalks on both sides of the street, period. And so I'm glad to see the, the development going back to that, that what our city standard is. So I'm, I'm in support of this also. And I, as, as has been pointed out, that this isn't a bailout, that that ninety thousand was just a few, a payment for future in lieu of. And I think having sidewalk on both sides of the street is a far better trade-off than, than the ninety thousand.
Mm-hmm.
Any further discussion by council? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries five to one to read the resolution.
Moving Resolution 2013-37 by title only. A resolution amending the planned unit development agreement between the city of Lewiston and Idaho Municipal Corporation and Canyon Crest Estates LLC and Idaho Limited Liability Corporation, replacing an amendment to the PUD agreement dated December 28, 2009, discontinuing payments in lieu of sidewalks and providing for sidewalks to be constructed by the developer on both sides of the streets in the development. Authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk to execute and attest respectively set agreement and providing an effective date.
Resolution 2013-37 has been read. I'll entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2013-37.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve Resolution 2013-37.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution 2013-37. Is there any discussion by council? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign?
Nay.
Motion carries five to one. Next item of business is second reading, reading of Ordinance 4596. I'll entertain a motion to read Ordinance 4596 for the second time.
Mr. Mayor, move that we read Ordinance 4596 for the second time.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to read Ordinance 4596 for the second time. Is there any discussion by council? Counselor Daniel?
I'll go ahead and support reading it. I am gonna make, this is the one I was referring to, I was gonna make an amendment to. And ultimately, I'll, I'll still vote to, to read the third reading, but if it, if my amendment in one way, one shape or form doesn't go in, I, I ultimately won't vote to adopt it. But...
Counselor Stevenson?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I, I think I'll vote to read it, but I think that, only because it's the second reading, but I think that given the, the data that we learned this evening, we might wanna tweak it.
I agree. As a reason, I pulled it off of the consent agenda, it was, I'd like Mr. Barker to contact this Riley Hughes and, and Mike Monroe and Robert Cook and Dylan Byrd and kinda get their input. I think they brought some things to light, they're worth consideration. And it, it may very well be, I guess, what I, I was looking at was, thinking back, that when Mr. Riley Hughes was, was here, I, I think Mr. Dan Prozel was about that age when he first came to city council, or younger, first came to city council with this plan to build a skate park and raise money to do it. And so this, I, I think this discussion, it may, may not change the exclusion of, of scooters, it may or may not, but it may further the discussion of maybe we can enhance that facility out there to where we can have something that is a little more scooter-friendly or, and for safety of the younger kids, something that they can use to train on and learn the etiquette before they get onto the, the more technical park. And so, anyway, I, I think they've done, doing that for years, ski hill industry from the bunny hill to a double black diamond. And so I, I think maybe there's something we can do there for citizens, especially the younger ones.
Tim says, "We're giving the budget," right?
Yeah, just gotta put it in the budget. Counselor Stevenson?
Well, and it seemed like there are two issues. The, the scooters damaging the park, part, the infrastructure there. Sounds like other things are also doing that, and that was one of the big sway things for me. But then, so maybe it's not as big a deal. The thing that is als, also a big deal, though, is supervision of the younger kids. And maybe there's some way that we can address the fact of, that, you know, in the rules about younger people being supervised by somebody.
Well, I, I think that's where we're leaving the administrative rule, making up to the director, Parks and Rec.
Right.
I think for liability reasons alone, we need to be pretty restrictive on that, that we're not a daycare and that folks are going to leave their kids there, that we've probably got a minimum age requirement that could be there without adult supervision or, or some older family member. But I think that's something that, I, I think myself, and I think all of us, kinda learned something new about the dynamics of a skate park every time we've talked to folks and had them come give us comments. So I, I think that we've got a little bit more work to do with those ordinance, but I think we're getting close. And again, I think it's...
Do we just need to table it till Tim's had a chance to talk to the parties?
I, I think we could do the second reading. We've still got the third reading and adoption to come. And if, if we, if we have some concerns before that, we can sure it'd be appropriate to table it until we get those answered. That's acceptable to council. Any other discussion on, oh, reading Ordinance 4596 for the second time?
Over the past week, I did talk to a, it's relative of mine, I think he's fourteen years old. And he, he's actually one of the scooter users as well. And he, he referenced similar items that the gentleman did earlier today during the citizens' comments. So he's, he is a supporter of allowing scooters to still be there.
I think both sides, what I heard was the need for the older kids to mentor the younger ones and to teach them the etiquette. But I think that what we lack is a formal framework and some rule-making. And that's what really this ordinance does, is allow the Parks and Rec director to get that framework in place so that we can get some rules of conduct and, and for safety of the folks using that facility. Any other comment by council? Hearing none, those in favor, reading Ordinance 4596 for the second time, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries six, zero.
Hearing the second reading of Ordinance 4596 by title only, an ordinance of the city of Lewiston enacting a new section to be codified as Chapter 26, Article II, Section 16-24, establishing rules and regulations for public skate parks, providing definitions, providing for general operating regulations, providing for signage, providing for penalties and enforcement, and providing an effective date.
Okay, we'll move on to unfinished and new business. Counselor Daniel?
I wanted to make a motion, if that's appropriate to amend.
Sure.
I move that scooters be removed from Section 26-19 prohibited conduct, A.
There's a motion on the table?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to remove scooters from the ordinance. Is there any discussion?
Well...
Counselor Stevenson?
Was that how you specified it?
Yeah, it's...
It was a little more specific.
Well, scooters is mentioned in the prohibited conduct, Section A.
Yeah.
And so I'm getting that. I think that's the only other reference to scooters in here, unless I'm mistaken. Yeah.
You're right. Okay, and there's a mo, motion and a second to amend the language to Resolution 4596. Myself, I won't support the amendment at this point. I think that we've got some time for Mr. Barker to contact the parties and, and report back to us. And then maybe at that time it'd be appropriate to do the mending motion, but this time I won't be supporting the amendment. Any other discussion? Hearing none, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay?
Nay.
Motion fails two to four. I will move on to unfinished and new business. City council comments, are there any this evening? I'd like to, was brought to my attention by my neighbors crossed the street yesterday that our Babe Ruth team won the state championship over the weekend in Boise. So I'd like to, Mr. Bennett, if we could schedule a time, I know they're going into the playoffs for the World Series and stuff here soon, but sometime in the future, I'd like to have them here where council could give them some recognition for achievement state championship. Okay. Any other citizens, or city council comments this evening?
Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Ram.
Recently, I went on vacation and I went to a wedding in Detroit, Michigan. And when we got there, they declared bankruptcy.
You should've spent more.
But, I, in that...
It's your fault, John.
Even though, even though that we may butt heads and disagree with each other over the budget and stuff like that, we're blessed compared to them.
Oh, yeah.
And I hope with God we never face that situation. So, anyway, I just thought, you know, even though we disagree on a lot of things, I still think we, our process works. And we've been real fortunate in keeping the city going and, and the services that we provide and stuff like that. So it gives you a different perspective when you, you know?
Okay. Any other council comments? Mr. Bennett, city manager comments this evening?
No, sir. Just a reminder that we're, we're getting into the month of August, so we'll be, you know, having our three budget hearings on the 12th, the 19th, and the 26th. We will have our work session on the 5th of August, so it's gonna be a busy month.
Okay. Advisory board and commission appointments, is there any this evening? Counselor Orban?
Mr. Mayor, there will be two openings on the library board. We've accepted the resignations of Marjorie Johnston and Pamela Howard, long-term devoted members of that group. But I'm, and we're gonna keep those open for at least the month of, of August so that we have a good cadre of people. I'm sure that's what they would expect us to do and what we expect ourselves to do in filling that important position.
Okay.
We had a few, we had a few a couple of years ago, and we've got a couple right now.
Okay. I had a conversation with an individual today, and one of, I guess the end of our conversation is that the city used to have a human rights commission, and over a period of time, it, it was dissolved. Same with, well, we've had a couple that's done that. Anyway, we may see these folks coming back to city council with a possible proposal to re-initiate that commission again. Work session agenda topics, are there any from council? Counselor Daniel?
Propertyroom.com.
Propertyroom.com.
That's the, that's the bidding place we were...
Oh, okay.
So I'd like to discuss at least, I, I'd at least like council to see if there's any other options for staff to bring their recommendations.
I, I think maybe just, it's always good to kinda get refreshed on the process of how we get rid of our property, because I know sometime, backhoes and stuff like that's a little different than some of the stuff that the fire and police has. So we, there's a couple of things there, so that would probably be a good discussion. I agree. Any other work session agenda topics? Hearing none, thank you all. This meeting is adjourned.